Yeah. Welcome to the Town of Garner Town Council Regular Meeting of September 17th. Wonderful to look out and see all the interested people here tonight. We're here, here to learn, here to listen, here to help Garner move ahead. With that being said, I think we'll call the meeting to order with a roll call. If I could ask our town clerk to call the roll. Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Okay, and I will call on Councilmember Grace Singleton to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like to join in the invocation? Father, we thank you for this day and the opportunity to gather here to talk about important business for our town. We want to lift up, do you, Father, those people in our community who are sick, those who are battling illnesses, terminal illnesses? Lift those people up and their families. Also lift up their caregivers who look after their family members in this time of sickness. Father, we ask that you look after this nation as we seem to be divided fifty-fifty on doing this, that, and the other. We ask that you watch over and guide us and hope that your guiding hand will lead us all to think and work together. Lift up those men and women who are serving in the military and bases and military institutions around this world. We ask that you be with those men and women and be with their families, Father. God, this council, God, our staff, and God, our citizens, as we listen tonight and gotta work together to make Garner what it is a great place to be. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Singleton. We have a section here titled petitions and comments, and I don't think we have any.
We do.
We do have a petition comment. Then let me read the little prologue about petitions and comments. This portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items that are not included in the agenda that are out regarding matters germane to town policies or business or subjects within the town council's real or apparent jurisdiction. Individuals or group spokesmen must sign up with town clerk prior to the start of the meeting. The council is interested in hearing your concerns but will not take action or deliberate on the subject matter brought up during this petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. And with that, I ask our town clerk, how many people do we have signed up to comment? Just one, okay. And if that person would please address the podium and introduce yourself with name and address.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sarah Kramer and I live at 214 Muirfield Ridge Drive in Garner.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, my name is Sarah Kramer and I'm here to talk about affordable housing for Wake County workers, law enforcement, teachers, and other public servants who help Garner be a great place to be. I've been a resident of Garner for the past eighteen years. You may know me from my time working at the Southeast Regional Library next door. When we first moved to Garner in 2006 from Massachusetts, we had been unable to purchase a home there due to unaffordability. When we moved here, we were able to find a safe, clean, and conveniently located two-bedroom apartment for about $800 a month. I even received a small discount on rent for being a county worker. By living in Garner and working at the library, I was quickly able to become a part of the community. Our housing costs were low enough to save for a down payment and soon we were able to purchase a home. Unfortunately, this is no longer the case. Two-bedroom rents at the new apartment complex on 5070 are $1,700, which is double the cost. Wage increases have not kept up with the increases in housing costs. Several of my work colleagues struggle financially because rent eats up most of their wages. I have colleagues who have forty-five to sixty-minute commutes because they can't afford to rent or buy in Wake County. We've had excellent job applicants turn down offers because they can't find a place to live. I was reading an article the other day that referenced a study that showed our area's middle-class residents are leaving town at a faster rate than other areas. It will be a huge loss to this community if we allow our essential workers, the people who teach our kids, our law enforcement officers, and other residents who support our day-to-day lives get priced out of Garner. I know there are no easy solutions, but looking at options like ADUs, SROs, Habitat for Humanity houses, and higher-density housing options are all places to start. If we don't address housing affordability, I'm concerned that we will see a fraying of social connections in Garner as fewer and fewer workers will be able to live in the town where they work. We chose to live in Garner not only because it was affordable, but because of its strong sense of community and civic pride. When there are affordable housing options, it creates a community that is safe, vital, and where its citizens can thrive. Thank you for your time today, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Affordable housing is certainly on everyone's mind these days. I think everyone agrees it would be great to have our firemen, our policemen, our librarians, the people who work with us live in our town. That's certainly an admirable goal. While we're not going to be deliberating on that tonight, it's always good news to remind you that we have appointed an Affordable Housing Task Force. It's led by our town councilman and by our town manager, Ms. Miller, and our Mayor Pro Tim, Mr. Vance. And within the next couple of, next few weeks, they will be bringing us their first quarterly report of the progress. So I'm excited that we're trying to address this, we're trying to learn, try to educate ourselves. So thanks for your comments and your support. Before we jump into the adoption of the agenda, I do just want to tell you what an exciting agenda we do have tonight. We get to recognize and have a presentation on a couple of really outstanding town staff who we never get a chance to thank them enough. We have four public hearings having to do with rezoning and annexation. We have a piece of new business at the very end, if anybody's still sticking around, that has to do with Council Code of Conduct and Ethics. And I just want to keep stressing the positivity of that topic, that this is not a reaction to any bad behavior or bad actions. This is being proactive, trying to establish good communication between the citizens, the council, the staff, the developers, all the members of our community that make it come together. So we're working on that proactively to try to enhance communication. So a very exciting agenda tonight. And that being said, I'm going to ask if there is a motion to adopt the agenda before us.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Matthews, seconded by Ms. Singleton and Ms. Behringer simultaneously. All in favor of adopting the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Passes unanimously. And let's start out with one of the best things, and that's saying thank you and recognizing outstanding achievement of some of our employees. And let's call on Mr. Paul Paget, our inspections director, to give us a little background and tell us what so significant has happened here.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, and council members and everybody that's joined us this evening. Our inspections department, our folks are out in the field all the time, and we've had a couple of landmark occurrences that have occurred in the past few months. The first one, if we could get Laura Gray and Jacob Parente to kind of come up front. So both Laura and Jacob have been with us for a bit. Laura was, had joined the department in May of 2019 and Jacob, November of 2020. They both were promoted July of this year to our lead building inspector positions. Within that time, so Laura received the North Carolina Building Inspectors Association Area Five Building Inspector of the Year. That was issue, or, and I'll just read a little bit. So at its annual conference in late July, the North Carolina Building Inspectors Association recognized Laura's outstanding contributions by presenting her with the prestigious Area Five Building Inspector of the Year Award. This well-delivered or well-deserved honor resulted from a nomination from her peers, highlighting her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to upholding the highest standards as a North Carolina building code official. This award acknowledges individuals in different geographical areas of the association who have excelled and served as exemplary role models. We have six areas that the association has kind of divided North Carolina up to. So she received that. The bigger part of that is, over the past few months, they both have received their fifth Level III certificate. So the Level III certificate is the highest certificate available to code officials through the North Carolina Code Of Officials Qualification Board. The certification program encompasses five distinct trades: building, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, and fire. Earning a Level III certification in all five trades is a remarkable testament to a code official's commitment to their profession. It necessitates extensive classroom time, practical experience gained through thousands of hours of field inspections, and successful completion of fifteen rigorous exams. This achievement showcases a comprehensive understanding of our codes and regulations and a dedication to upholding our profession's highest safety and quality standards. So with that, we'd like to present them with a certificate of completion for receiving those fifth Level IIIs.
And while you're standing up there, in case you would like to make any comments to us, we'd be glad to hear them. Well, then I'll call on this bunch of there seldom enough for words, any comments that any of the council members would like to make.
To Ms. Lori and Mr. Jacob, congratulations on this tremendous endeavor. And also, Ms. Lori, congratulations on receiving the very prestigious award.
Yeah, just congratulations. I don't think people realize that inspectors are public safety officers and really keep the community safe. So thank you both for your commitment, and your whole department for what you all do. Thank you.
Appreciate everything you do every single day. It doesn't get noticed all the time, but it has results and we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for working here at the Town of Garner. Thank you for your dedication and continue to achieve the highest certificate that you can in your profession. And congratulations. I know Paul's happy to have you all doing this, and we'll keep an eye on you, you just getting started, so maybe you'll take his job one day, what do you think? Congratulations.
Yeah, thanks. We take for granted the work that so many people do behind the scenes, but what you do is not just inspecting new construction, but other housing problems and issues, and can be a real, you can be a real proactive force in the community, and you are. We can't thank you enough. Let's have another round of applause for this. May everybody love some good news. Now, how about some consent agenda? Here's almost eleven or twelve different items that have been studied by staff and council, and if, if there's no objection or if there's no reason to pull any out singly, we can pass these all at one time in the consent agenda. And not hearing any idea of breaking any out, I will ask the council members for a motion in a second.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Vance and seconded by Mr. Matthews to adopt the consent agenda and approve these items without further discussion. And I will ask our council members all to signify, all in favors, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any objection by nay. Hearing none, the consent agenda passes unanimously. Thank you very much for doing your homework and studying this stuff outside of the regular meeting. Now we come to the public hearings, and I have the feeling that's what many of you are here about tonight, to be heard and to hear. So thank you again for taking the interest, and I do like to read the official disclaimer that we have every time. And tonight's public hearings are legislative hearings, which do not require sworn testimony. However, persons interested in speaking, including the applicant, must sign up with the town clerk. Town staff will present a brief presentation, followed by the applicant and other persons who wish to comment on the item will be recognized. Council requests groups of individuals with the same position to designate a representative to speak for the group. We also like to hold the public's comments to three minutes. I'm not sure our stop clock is working tonight, but we'll ask everybody to be polite and be courteous as we work through these different issues. So that being said, let's start with the first one on the agenda here, which is the Parkway Drive. And let's call on one of our professional planners and the staff here, Thomas Waltersdorf, to give us the orientation.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, Jeff Trezenberg, Planning Director. I did just want to introduce again, I think most of you know Thomas from his work with the Planning Commission, but he was promoted internally from Allison's group as a planning technician. He's now working with Aaron's group as a Planner One. So this is his first presentation to you all tonight, but again, just wanted to introduce him and let you know about that promotion.
Thank you. Always time for another pat on the back of someone who's worked hard and studied it hard, and it's helping us more and more every day. Thank you very much, Thomas.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and the public. I'll be presenting to you today GZ 24001, 2311 Parkway Drive. This is a general rezoning. So for this, we are the applicant, the Town of Garner. The owner of the parcel is Polty Home Company LLC. This is a general rezoning request for .28 acres from Wake County residential forty watershed to rural agricultural RA Town of Garner. Once again, the site is at 2311 Parkway Drive. It's right between, it's right, it's within the Brookwood neighborhood adjacent to Exchange at 401. This rezoning is to be aligned with our annexation position, ANX 24002. It's solely to provide emergency fire access to the exchange at 401 neighborhood. And having this annexed into the town and zoned properly just allows us to enforce this site just for emergency access only. As I said, the existing zoning is Wake County or forty watershed, primarily residential in use in the area. There are some vacant sites. Currently, this parcel is vacant. For context, the surrounding Brookwood neighborhood is low-density single-family homes, also a mix of single-family homes and vacant lots. And that yellow parcel below is the Exchange at 401 community. It's R4 conditional. That is a mix of single-family and multifamily homes, and those Terran apartments are on the 401 side of Exchange at 401. The property is not within any activity centers, although there's a neighborhood activity center to the southwest along 401. So we're proposing a zoning of the site of rural agricultural. We chose that because it's most similar to the existing Wake County R40 watershed zoning. There's no intent to upzone or downzone the property. We just want to maintain rough equivalency between the two. There's no intent to develop the site besides providing this gated fire access for emergency vehicles. The RA Garner zoning has less permitted uses overall than the current Wake County zoning for the site. For the neighborhood meeting, staff identified thirty-four properties within the notification radius, and we sent out mail for that. The neighborhood meeting was held on August 22nd here at Town Hall, but nobody showed up, so no persons in attendance. Just a reminder, this, there's no site-specific master plan to review on this, so we're just using the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan for consistency. So we found only four growth framework criteria that we could evaluate, just due to the site only being used for this emergency access. The zoning district criteria was rated negatively because the rural agricultural zoning doesn't fit within the neighborhood's character area crosswalk, but we do believe that RA best resembles the Wake County zoning, so that's why that was chosen. Given the other metrics that we were able to evaluate, the prevailing development pattern, typical street cross-section, and the block sizes and patterns crosswalk, those all rated strong consistency. We found that the land use and community character criteria did not apply because it's only used. it's only used for emergency access, so any analysis was not included. You'll find the land character map type, it fits into the neighborhood's typology, and then the development intensity map, it is a Tier Two area to strengthen, and of course, having robust emergency services strengthens the area. So tonight, for our overall review, we've determined that the results are largely consistent with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. Once again, this is a town-led rezoning, so we're just applying our zoning to this solely for emergency fire access, once it's annexed into the town. Tonight, we'll finish and close our public hearing. You'll make a decision to refer to Planning Commission for findings of planned consistency with recommendations to approve or deny, and then it will come back to you in the future for findings of reasonableness and decision to approve or deny. So that concludes my presentation, but I'll be here along with staff if you have any questions.
Yes, please stand by, and we'll ask the council members if you have some questions for Mr. Walters-Dorf.
Mr. Delman.
Just a question, use table, wouldn't it be narrowed down to a single use?
Yeah, well...
I don't think it's going to go there, but...
Sorry. Yes, we thought just for sake of ease that it's best to apply general rezoning rather than conditional zoning. You'll find a lot of the non-residential uses that are part of RA also require special use permit, so we think that that kind of provides additional oversight if anything were to change on this site. And of course, there could always be changes to the zoning in the future if you'd like to.
Thank you.
Mr. Vance.
No questions?
Okay, and let's see, I'll ask our attorney if anyone has signed up for the public to speak on this matter.
No one has signed up for this public hearing.
Okay, that being the case, it looks like the question for council on this issue is whether to refer it to the Planning Commission for Further Study Public Hearing to return back to this council for final decision. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Mr. Stevenson moves, Mr. Matthews makes a second. All in favor of referring this case to the Planning Commission signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Excellent job on one of your very first presentations.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Okay, next, item two on the public hearing is a Tier Two Conditional rezoning request related to the Bethel Green project. Our presenter is Ashley Harris, Senior Planner. With that, I'll turn it over to you to give us a little background on this situation.
Good evening, Council and Mr. Mayor. Good to see you all again. This is CZ MP 2307, Bethel Green. This is a Tier Two Conditional rezoning submitted by Foxfield Land Partners to rezone approximately 138.52 acres from R2 to R8 conditional for the development of 328 single-family detached units. The site is generally located on the south side of New Bethel Church Road, and it is between the existing Glen Creek and Oak Manor subdivisions. The applicant has provided a number of zoning conditions that restrict the range of permitted uses and provide additional commitments. So as I said, the existing zoning is residential two, which is primarily consisting of low-density, single-family homes, and encourages high-quality development and open space protection. It is within the Swift Creek overlay district, which limits the amount of impervious surface for a single-family residential to 30%. The general area is a mixture of R2, R4 conditional, and RA. It has been undergoing some increased development with many residential projects in construction or recently approved or in review with town staff. Water and sewer are readily available and will connect from the adjacent Oak Manor For the framework map, there are two activity centers nearby the site. To the northeast, there is a neighborhood activity center, and then also to the west. This is a mixture of mostly vacant tracts, single-family neighborhoods, and a few remaining agricultural tracts, and this area has been transitioning from low-density rural agricultural to more suburban development and densities. The proposed zoning is R8 conditional, R8 C313. They have narrowed their permitted uses to one out of a possible eighteen, and that would be only single-family detached. They are proposing a maximum of 328 dwelling units, 206 of those being a 45 by 120-foot product, and 122 being a 52 by 120-foot lot. Some of the other conditions that they have proposed, they are limiting the density to 2.5 dwelling units per acre. They are providing a minimum one-acre neighborhood recreation amenity area that will include a pavilion, fire pits, and outdoor gathering space. They are committing to additional 3.5 acres of common greens, pocket parks, and a playground that will be spread throughout the neighborhood. They will each contain one of the following elements here, so playlons, totlots, picnic tables, dog parks, fire pits, public art, outdoor games, shade structures, seating areas, or a community garden. And they are committing that at least one of those spaces will have the playground element. They are also providing a covered mail kiosk area, and then 45% of the gross area will include HOA-maintained active open space, passive space, and common areas. They will include tree preservation areas, riparian buffers, floodplain wetlands, stormwater control measures, and active and passive amenities. They are providing a network of paved private and public trails throughout the neighborhood, and they do have some architectural conditions as well. So they will have two or more types of finishes on the front. Materials will be limited to cementitious siding, board and batten, shake and shingle siding. Final windows, shutters, and PVC solid trim boards will be permitted. There will be minimum 12-inch grade separation from average grade along the home's facade, and exposed foundations will be clad in either masonry or stone. All homes will have at least a two-car garage, a minimum of 1,500 heated square feet, eight-inch minimum eaves and rakes, four-inch minimums on secondary roofs and gutters do not count towards that requirement. They will have more than one ridge line on the roof, a covered front porch, a minimum of five feet by five feet. Garage doors will have carriage door hardware or windows, and a patio deck or screen porch of at least 100 square feet will be provided, and shutters will be around all windows on the front elevation. They do have some additional commitments to side lights, transom windows, and craftsman-style paneling or glazing around the front porch or door. The windows within the facade face utilizing siding materials will be set in full trim of at least one-by-four board. Any decorative front porch columns will have six inches, will be a minimum of six inches, and the decorative columns with variable dimensions will be less than six inches in widthward depth. All homes will have articulation in the side elevations, including windows on each floor, and two of the following, side entry additional windows, 18-inch brickstone or water table, two types of finishes, and where permitted by code, the required window will be five square feet. Street-facing garages will have a two-foot setback of garage from overall front plane of building, recessed vertical break-in front elevation to create visual separation between the garage and overall unit, or change in roof pitch or gable over the garage. 10% of the homes will have first-floor primary suites. No front elevation will be the same on two adjacent homes or directly across the street. And this development is within the White Oak Bryan Road corridor for the impact area for the development agreement for road improvements, and so this project will contribute to that. The proposed promoter buffer along the shared property line at 5,020 Element Court, excluding the overhead power line easement, will include a fence meeting the UDO standard for location height and material. The proposed development will assist the Glen Oak Creek HOA with signage stating no construction traffic, and the New Bethel Church right-of-way dedication and improvements along the front of the development will be completed with this project as well. So here is that master plan, and this is where the road frontage will be improved with that dedicated right-of-way and pavement and sidewalk installation. So even though this front parcel is not currently included in this project, there will be the road improvements along that frontage. You can see the two types of housing products, with this darker orange being the smaller product, and this lighter orange being the larger lot size. This yellow represents the private trails that go throughout the community and connect some of these various open spaces, and then the orange trail represents the public greenway component, which goes adjacent to the Swift Creek and the conservation buffers at the back of the property here. So as I said, this is approximately 138.52 acres. 206 lots are the 45 by 120 lot, and then 122 are that 52 by 120 lot. 13.9 acres of the development is open space, 25% of which will be active open space. There is also a combination of conservation and recreation space, including the riparian buffer areas and conservation buffer areas. The recreation will include qualifying open areas, amenities, pedestrian trails, and that new public greenway segment. This is not within a watershed protection area. It is subject to water quality and quantity requirements. They are currently proposing four stormwater control measures, and the water and sewer will connect to adjacent properties in Oak Manor, and sewer lines will be extended to adjacent and upstream properties per the Raleigh Water Policy. So a traffic impact analysis was required by the town in NCDOT. It was completed in June of 2023, assuming a maximum of 310 dwelling units. At that time, they assumed 98 single-family detached and 212 townhouse units, so the numbers presented from the TIA are slightly higher than what we might expect. They will be providing an updated TIA prior to Planning Commission, but we do see an AM peak hour of 56 trips in and 167 trips out, and 194 trips in and 114 trips out in the PM hour. Based on that TIA, the NCDOT recommended a left-turn lane at Squirrel Oaks Lane, and then additional right-turn lanes at Site Access One. And I will turn it over to Jeff for some more traffic information.
So at your direction, you had asked staff to look at some additional data for traffic counts in this area of town, so myself and Aaron have been working with engineering to try to pull some data together for you. And so we look, again, the goal was to look at the adequacy of the future road network. I will just throw out that this was looked at in the previous comprehensive plan at a very high level, at which time that comprehensive plan recommended that this whole area not exceed densities of five dwelling units per acre, and that they settle kind of into that medium category in order for the road network to support it. As part of our research, we kind of tested the ITE, the Institute for Transportation Engineer, their trip estimates. We found that it was largely consistent with our locally available data for this area. And then we focused our analysis on buildout of dwelling units that would either primarily be using the Hebron Church Road access out onto White Oak or the New Bethel Church Road access out onto 50. We cut off Ackerman and Bryan Road accesses at this time. There was kind of a way that we could divide it into a southern section and a northern section of this area of town, and we found that generally there should be a capacity of about 4,300 more trips beyond what this project and others that are currently in planning, which is largely confined, again, that cutoff line is pretty much Clifford, that Clifford Road area, Clifford and Wynne. So we put together some graphics here just to kind of try to show you that. The area kind of outlined in this red would be the area that would be making use of either the Hebron Church access onto White Oak here, or the New Bethel out onto 50 here. For this part of the development along Ackerman Road, it's closer for them to use either the Ackerman or the Bryan exit or entrance. And then we also identified, oh, I'm so sorry, we also identified that in the transportation plan, we do have a additional point of access out onto 50 from Ackerman Road, but at this time, there is no timing on that. So again, this is not an intersection, it's analysis, it's not a level of service analysis, that's what TIA's are for, that are conducted by traffic engineers. This is just another data point to kind of check where we are at. So each of those roadways has that theoretical capacity of 18,300 trips per day on each roadway. So we started out with that theoretical maximum of 36,600. For just conservative kind of contingency-like, we just took 10% off the top and reduced our max to basically 90%. We then took the existing traffic, which was measured most recently on September of 2023, and at that time, Garner had about 2,000 built dwelling units in that red area that I showed you before. We applied our standard historical vacancy rate, just to try to get at, okay, well, we have 2,000 units, about how many of those are occupied at any one given time? And we came up with 8.04 trips roughly per dwelling unit, and I will note that that does include and capture trips to and from the high school using those points of access as well. In TIA's, you'll often hear that called, I think they call that like internal capture, so they're not, there can be trips that aren't passing through either one of those entry points into this part of Garner. It may be somebody who's just traveling from one of the neighborhoods to the school and back home, so it's not picking up those. But even at that, with townhomes, the ITE says that they generate a little over seven trips per day, and single-family is just over 10. The fact that this came out to 8.04, when most of what this is in the area at this time was single-family detached, we felt that if anything, using the ITE estimates is a good mark, and it's probably, if anything, it may be a little over, but again, that just keeps things conservative, we feel, in terms of the overall analysis. So we took those ITE generation rates, we applied that to projects that are both approved and that are currently in planning, and I will note that the ones that are in planning, that includes Bethel Green, which you are hearing tonight, the Homestead at Bryan Farm, which you have already heard and is in process, as well as Clifford Towns, which is another project that's a little earlier or later in the cycle, and you'll be hearing about in the future. So at the end of the day, what you see is that we have about 12% of the capacity that's unassigned, and if you put that with the contingency, it's about 22%, or just about a quarter capacity left. So then we looked at what is, what land is largely remaining to be, that is unbuilt. We identified kind of five major areas where there's not, you know, I'm sure there's, there are homes there, certainly the property owners have homes there, but very large acreage with just one or two homes. So we have about 75 acres down here at the end of Ren Road, about another 75 off of Gentle Rain Drive, both of those back up to the new 540 corridor. We do have maybe about 50 acres here on the east side of 40, although I think that will probably just end up being well in Septic unless they can bring utilities across 40. We have the Bryan tracks here on the south side of New Bethel, again, about 50. We have the Bryan tracks here on the south side of New Bethel, again, about fifty acres. And the Starks land up here near the park, which is roughly twenty five or so. Then, of course, there's always opportunities for redevelopment. We have the Oregon Trail neighborhood, as well as the Buffalo Estate properties kind of in front of it. And then, of course, if anything were to happen along the Wind Road area, which right now is very low density rural. So at the end of the day, again, we have another data point. We know that the capacity is coming closer. I think it reinforces what the TIA's are probably already showing us. It speaks to what the original or the last version of the comprehensive plan promoted in terms of density. So that was kind of our major takeaways, that it's still telling us the same story. And again, it's just another data point for us to reference and for you to consider. And I'll turn it back over to Ashley to finish up the presentation for us.
Okay, so just wrapping up with environmental and cultural resource notes. As I mentioned, Swift Creek runs adjacent to the southwestern boundary of the site. There are some associated floodplains and conservation areas in that portion of the site. That would be reserved for tree preservation and greenway trails only. There's also that utility easement that bisects the site that will also have a portion of public greenway throughout that. The existing home near New Bethel Church Road will be subdivided from this property, but those frontage improvements will be completed. A hundred and fifty six properties were notified for the neighborhood meeting and that meeting report has been provided for you. This is not within an activity center. It is classified as a neighborhood area character typology and it is a level two area to strengthen. Staff identified fifteen growth framework that were evaluated. Eleven were strongly consistent, two were modest consistent, one was modestly inconsistent, and one was strongly inconsistent. The inconsistencies were all related to the recommended housing styles, lot sizes, and relationship between them. And there were twenty six areas from the land use and community character analysis that were applicable. And that was a overall modest consistency for that. So with some continued fine tuning in response to the evaluation and with additional public input, staff would be able to support a stronger overall finding of consistency. So after we have closed the public hearing, this project will be referred to Planning Commission for their determination of consistency before returning to you for final action. And the applicant has prepared a presentation tonight as well.
Thank you very much. I think we'll hear the applicant's presentation, then we'll come back with questions from council of you and the applicant.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And applicant speaker for the applicant, if you would introduce yourself, name and address, please.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group, four twenty four Fayetteville Street, Suite twenty two hundred, Raleigh, North Carolina, two seven six zero one. Excited to be here with my good friends at Foxfield Atlantic. Joining me tonight are Kurt Berger, Gordon Paulson, and Stuart Paulson of the applicants. Also joining me is Beth Blackman with Timmins, who's been providing land planning and engineering associated with this site. And then Jeff Hokenadle with Timmins is the traffic engineer for this proposal. Excellent presentation from the staff, very thorough, especially as it relates to certain items that are always important to the council's deliberation associated with changes in zonings, and that's things like traffic. So I'm not going to repeat a lot of what staff has already said. I don't want to bore you, they've done a fantastic job of hitting the the details of the case. I do want to highlight a handful of things. We believe that this proposal is is the right use in the right location. It's the right type of density, it's a good transition between a slightly higher density development to our north and the county development to our south. We think it is appropriately conditioned. We think this development represents with the the careful fine tuning, the thought that's gone into things like private trails, public open spaces, that this is the type of development that Garner will be proud of when it is built. And it's being done by a group of people who are known for delivering high quality development in Garner as well as other places. So we're really excited to be here. From a comprehensive plan consistency standpoint, we agree with the staff's analysis that this proposal strongly supports the land use recommendations. First of all, it's exclusively single family detached. There are no townhomes that were ever assumed to be part of this plan and this this is a an applicant, this is an applicant team who's been listening to you all, following every case as it makes its way through the process and making sure that they understand what the council's expectations are beyond kind of the written comprehensive plans. And so this is exclusively single family detached. It's being delivered at two point three seven dwelling units per acre. One additional piece of information on that that I do want to highlight, because I know that our team is aware that the council's often interested in trying to figure out like, okay, if you take out the areas that can't be developed, what type of density are we looking at here? And if you take out the forty two and a half acres of wetlands, streams and stream buffers, along with the power line easement, the the development density for this site is at like three point four dwelling units per acre. And again, so so if you kind of back out all those undevelopable areas, it's still a fairly reasonable overall density. And I think that's reflective of a client who's been, like I said, who's been watching you all closely and understands that the council doesn't want to see just a whole bunch of stuff crammed into one bag. And I and I think those lower density numbers are reflective of that. A big part of that, those numbers, is the the robust system. And can I, yeah, the the robust system of trails and open spaces that are part of this development. And I'm going to come back to the open spaces, I'm going to go to the trails. So the trail system that's been developed has has been in close coordination with the planning staff. They've done a really good job, planning staff has, of of helping make this plan a better plan. And so the trail system, you see, the combination of public and private trails is a total of, based on current planning, just south of nine thousand linear feet of trails are being delivered as part of this project. That's approximately a mile and a half worth of public and private trails being delivered as part of this development. As you can see, they kind of weave in and out of the development, being carefully thought about in terms of how the development not only connects people to people, but also connects people to open spaces. As it relates to the open spaces, the open spaces that have been planned have been very carefully thought out. They've been intentionally interspersed throughout the development to ensure that this is the type of development that will encourage community activity. In fact, seventy five percent of all of the lots in this development are within a ten lot walk to a private trail or a public trail. And seventy nine percent of the homes that are going to be in this development are within a ten lot walk of an an active open space, not a passive open space, an active open space. And so the slide that you have up demonstrates the type of active open spaces that are are being created and being thoughtfully curated during the process of coming up with this plan. And again, I think it's a testament to a fact that this is a developer who's not just trying to squeeze as much onto the site as they possibly can. They're trying to deliver the type of community that the Garner that Garner will be proud of. Also want to talk a little bit about the zoning conditions. And again, I don't want to go into great detail because staff has already done a good job with that. But I I do want to give a little bit of credit to the the developer, the developer and the developers team in terms of the type of architectural conditions that are wired into this development. I don't believe this is like your rank and file type case that you're typically going to see. This is a developer who, again, has been listening closely and and has incorporated a a robust set of architectural conditions that will ensure not only a highly walkable and a well thought out plan, but also a high quality plan, something that, again, when you drive through, we believe Garner is going to be very, very proud of. Couple of things that I do want to note as it relates to our discussions with our neighbors, and we know some of them are here tonight. We appreciate their continued interest and participation in the process. At our last meeting, we agreed to offer three new conditions as part of the case. The first is that fence condition that we mentioned earlier, where we're going to have a fence along our shared property boundary where it ties into Altamont Court. And so that that was a condition that was added at our most recent neighborhood meeting in response to a specific request from that landowner. The second thing is to provide that that signage within Glen Creek, making it clear that construction traffic to our development shouldn't be winding its way through Glen Creek. The last one I want to mention, and it was one that we were hopeful that we would be able to offer, we made a specific request for it. There was a request that our connection to Altamont Court be gated, that and only have emergency vehicles or emergency access through that gated portion of the site. That's something we were interested in providing as part of this case and and something we're continuing to be interested in and being able to do. As we understand it, we made that offer to the town and the response we got back was that we couldn't offer that condition because the length of the roads coming in there are too long. That basically the the existing road where Altamont Court plugs in is a non code compliant road. And so we didn't have the ability to include that gated access, at least that's what we've been told. But I just want to be clear to you all, we were, we are happy to do that. We we were continuing to be happy to do that because we think it's the right thing to do. As it relates to traffic, and I I won't get into this in great detail because I'm not a traffic engineer, but we've got one of those here who can answer questions that you all may have. As Jeff noted in his presentation and the staff report does a great job of, there is sufficient capacity along New Bethel Church Road for this development as well as the other ones that are in the plans and that are in the in in the works. I do want to give my client, again, credit. They've worked with Mr. Cox, who's still going to stay in that residence to do frontage widening along New Bethel Church Road, which is a little atypical, but again, it was something that they recognize as important to this council and wanted to be able to make that as a commitment. So Mr. Cox has agreed to allow my client to do that prior to the hundred and fiftieth certificate of occupancy. Last, I do want to note that, you know, traffic is tough. It is, and especially for an area that's growing as fast as Garner is, and Garner's growing very fast, like a lot of other places in this market. I would note that our peak numbers, so our peak hour analysis, if you look at the numbers, in the AM, we've got a hundred and sixty seven vehicles going out. And in the PM, we have a hundred and ninety four vehicles coming in. So that's our peak hour analysis, that's based on the TIA. And I I mentioned those numbers because if you divide that up over the peak hour, that's roughly one vehicle every twenty seconds, give or take, during that peak hour is being added to the traffic volumes in this area. And so while those numbers sound very large, the reality is, is it's one, it's one, it's one vehicle roughly every twenty seconds as part of the development. Again, we're we're proud of the work that's gone into this development. We think it's appropriate for this location. We think it's going to be a really nice transition between two existing communities. We think it's it's, the conditions are reflective of the type of style of development that this council is demanding of of everyone. It's single family detached. And so with that, we're here to answer any questions you all may have. And we would respectfully request you all's ultimately support of the case at the end of this process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, that's great information. And at this point, while you're up here and while Ms. Harris is close by, let's ask the council members if they have any questions for either of these two. Let's start with Mr. Matthews.
Nothing at this time.
I have questions for staff. But I can ask, or I can just make a comment, Mr. Barron's, his last comment, which is good, one car every twenty seconds. But for the six or seven or eight substitutions that are approved, that's six or seven or eight cars every twenty seconds.
Understood.
That's the way to look at it.
Sure.
Just remember that. I I do have, when we get back, I have questions about what Mr. Treason represented about the traffic numbers in that area. Not specific to what they're asking, just blended together. I'll wait a little while else, Mr. Barron's here, go ahead and ask, ask him his questions.
Okay. Questions, comments, Mr. Dallinger? And if you would, pull your microphone down close, we're still, we've still got a work in progress on these microphones. I remind each of you two, please try to get close and talk. Some of us don't hear as well as some of the rest of you do.
I have questions for staff before I have questions for the applicant.
I have no questions at this time.
So you have questions for?
Staff, yes. Before I have an applicant, I want to get some clarification on that information.
Do you have questions for staff? Okay, well, I guess you can sit down for a moment.
That sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that being said, go ahead.
Yeah, just one question on the the pie chart related to the traffic counts and the calculations. I want to make sure because I read it in the packet. The Ackerman extension is included or not included as road capacity?
It's not included.
Okay, thank you. The other one, if you could refresh my memory on R eight zoning and the wording of that and the UDO. Could you do that for me, please?
Yeah, we can pull that up for you.
Yeah, could you read that for us, please?
The R eight district is a dense residential district with urban character and potentially a mix of low impact, non residential and mixed use structures at select locations. House scale multifamily units are also appropriate and add to the diversity of the neighborhood. These neighborhoods are very walkable and often border or are within a short distance of commercial or mixed use districts where shopping, retail, and services exist. The R eight district may also provide a transition from more commercially active areas to lower density, single family districts.
So I guess my question for the applicant is, how close is this to the nearest commercial or retail?
I don't know, do you know the answer to that question, how close we are to retail? Yeah, I mean, other than those two planned activity centers that aren't far from the site, right now, I mean, there's not a lot of commercial in this area, there's no doubt about that.
I have the answer.
Yeah, fair enough.
The closest commercial is the gas station at White Oak and Ackerman and Hebron, that's one and a half miles. If you want to go to Target, it's two and a half miles. If you want to go to Carolina Fish Fry or get a cup of coffee at Muse, it's three miles. This is not the right zoning designation for this project. This should be an R four zoning. The reason, and you say there's not a desire to ram and cram houses in here. The reason, if you'll scroll down to the setbacks, because I think this is a misuse of the R eight zoning. One, it's not close, it's not in a transition, it's isolated away from all kinds of, I mean, it borders our multifamily A. The reason you're you're going for the R eight is the set, the lot widths minimums are smaller and the setbacks in between homes are smaller.
That's exactly right, yes, sir.
Because you're trying to ram and cram as many houses in there as possible. And that R eight designation is designed for higher density, possibly even including commercial. So I have problems on the face of of it, that this is a misuse of this zoning district. You could achieve the same level of quality in amenities and trails but not have the houses be ten feet apart, which is what this zoning allows. So I'll make that comment later as part of my referral to Planning Commission. I I think it's an abuse of the the R eight zoning when R four would suffice and have a much more aesthetically pleasing neighborhood, but not try to piggyback on the desire in the UDO to this actually be closer to commercial use. That's my question, thank you staff for bringing that up. I have more questions, but I'll pass on.
Yes, I was going to talk to Mr. Treason, Ms. Harris, because I I don't, I don't want to ask you questions, I've already told him I was going to ask him, so he knows. We communicated numerous emails from last week over the weekend and we talked yesterday. I told him this page ninety four, which is in our agenda package, we need to put it on a banner and hang it in here so everybody can read it because of how important it is, because with with this project and the Homestead and the Clifford Towns, is that the Clifford Bethel project, one hundred and twenty one units?
Yes.
Is that what that is? Okay, that's included, okay. So we're down to forty three hundred units, and you think, oh, that sounds like a lot, ah, no, it doesn't. When this one's floating around three thousand. You get one more project down in there, my question to Jeff was that we all need to remember this, we're going to have to put the no vacancy sign up because that area's going to be full from capacity because it clearly says in this report that when you cross over from level D and E and you're at the level of capacity, it'll be a level F. And we won't be allowed, we shouldn't be allowed to do that through the state, and probably won't allow us to do it, until the outlet point is approved, whether that's Ackerman or something else. Ackerman's the most reasonable, but we're talking about crossing a big creek that's going to cost a lot of money. And that's, you know, we got, we want to improve Creech Road, we want to fix Jones' office road, we want to do this, we want to do that, it all costs money. And so this information, if these projects And so this information, if these projects that are up here, Bethel, one Homestead, and the other one, if they all pass, and they may not pass, but still, I believe with the R2 zoning here, you can do about 275 homes, if I believe. I think I read that in here. So, I mean, they can put homes here regardless, and that's not far off what they're doing. So they would be allowed to do that under the current zoning. So what you've done, and what I asked Mr. Treesmore yesterday was, is this, you know, these things get built and you get another one or two in here, because there's another one we talked about on the phone that's not listed on here, that has been in a talk with staff, is when that time comes, who's going to tell people, look, there's no more capacity? Is the staff going to stop it at that level, or are they going to let them get to us and make us do it? You know, because it's something that has to be considered as we move forward, and everyone needs to hear that. So that's why I just, if you'll confirm what you told me, if these projects get approved and we use up the other 4,300, even though you've got contingency, I asked you the question about, did you conclude the park? And what if South Garner has some expansion? So that contingency is kind of to help with that because we don't believe there's going to be a middle school built there anytime soon, if ever.
Right.
Based off conversations off of Havertway County.
Yep.
So if you're just, you know, if it gets to that point, tell me what staff would do when someone may come in down there in one of these pieces, these projects and says, hey, we want to come down here, how would we move, how would that be addressed?
So we're actually, we're already having some of those conversations with folks. We've certainly brought it up with these, this development group. We've had some inquiries on the parcels even down at Gentle Rain and the end of Ran Road, who initially did ask about higher density and would townhomes be appropriate back there? And we steered them specifically towards away from that kind of proposal to a larger lot kind of single-family. One, just because of the location, that's about as far away as you can get. Because, yeah, we do have a dwindling capacity, and so we're trying to do what we can to temper the expectations already. But, yeah, at some point, it's going to get to the point where we have to say, yeah, there's no capacity left until we add another point of access that we can then distribute some of these trips somewhere else. So, yeah, that's very much part of the conversation with folks.
Okay, I just thought it was important to bring up this point because, you know, if these people are aligned there in the process, it's not going to affect them, not anyone else. Whether they're approved or not, it's not going to affect them because they can still build homes there. It's just important that us, as the council realizes, this information is very important. I'm going to keep this in my case all the time now. My referral point, that and the information Ms. Harris gave us on Creech Road, I've got that also. Those two things are very important that we have to realize.
Yeah.
And when we talk about comparing roads, that's, you know, we're talking about 5,000 and 14,000 capacity. We're talking here about 18,000 on two roads that can handle 18,000, and we're rapidly approaching those. And so it's a lot of difference, a lot more dense, but still, they're neat. So I just wanted that on the record for everyone to hear, that that area is quickly, projects that are approved down there will quickly dry up here soon in the near future because I expect, you know, we're talking with other people right now, so it's just something to consider, the impact that any approved project will have. Thank you, and thank you for this information again, too.
Yes, good observation, very astute. The one resource we do have is land and access, but it is limited. We seem to have good capacity available on water and sewer, for example, due to past decisions. But the one thing that we will run out of in the short run, as Mr. Singleton says, is the transportation system, get people in and out. And which means, is there enough land? Use it wisely. Good observation. Other observations?
Yes, I'd like to also add to what Mr. Singleton is saying, that this is a very good rule of thumb to be using going forward to provide to those developers who want to come forward to know what the capacities will be available for them in the future. Because as everyone well knows, that's one of the main things that come up is about traffic, traffic, traffic. And this will give an indication of the capacity and ideas, maybe grandiose, as you mentioned, come before you now, larger capacity-type developments and understanding what currently will be the build-out. I'm saying the same thing pretty much as Mr. Singleton said, it'd be a point of saying for them to understand quickly that, hey, we need to rethink our plans before even coming forward. So I think that's a great start. And I have a few more questions, if you don't mind. I just want to reinforce that. And the next one is for R8, the number of conditions for R8 are what? How many conditions are permitted uses are there?
I don't know that we have that answer right off the top of our head, but it's probably in the 20s, 30s.
Okay, so how many uses are they requesting for this particular rezoning?
Just one.
And that reason, and the request is for what?
For single-family detached.
And that's, that's it?
That's it.
Okay. Are they participating in the Walter Buffalo project? The improvements along White Oak and Bryan Road?
Yes.
They contribute as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Again, I'll just say, the staff, great job on the high-level analysis, and that's all I have, sir.
Yeah, just to piggyback on and agree with my colleagues on the traffic as a capacity. And I think, I was having awareness, very similar to Creech Road, having awareness of what's in that pipeline and make some tough decisions on, are we going to allocate all of that resource to one or two projects? Or are there other projects that have other redeeming qualities or that are good projects? And try to spread out that resource amongst those projects and find a way to assess which projects are bringing the most impact to the town, whether it's on the fiscal impact side, or amenities side, or trails side, or I didn't see any mention of workforce housing, which was unfortunate and very disappointing. Maybe there's somebody in the pipeline who'd love to add some units to workforce housing. I mean, for all the density they're cramming in here to not make that, as part of the conversation is, again, disappointing when a lot of applicants have in recent times. But again, maybe there's somebody out there who does want to do that. So I disagree with my colleagues that we're kind of in the Creech Road era, where it's what are the best projects, what is out there? We need to be made aware of that and see which ones we want to move forward with. That's all I got right now. Thank you.
Ms. Barron, your comments?
I would agree with the observations made so far. It's very concerning about the traffic situation and the impact on the surrounding neighborhoods as we, as we all know, NC DOT does not widen roads or make improvements to those a problem. They don't look at it ahead of time, and we are the ones that would be dealing with the problem.
Thank you. That being said, I'd like to ask our town attorney if any individuals from the public have signed up to speak tonight.
Yes, we have a few that have signed up for this project. The first is Mike Priestcorn on Glen Creek Trail.
Yes, if you, Mike, if you would come to the podium, reintroduce yourself.
Mike Priestcorn. I live in Glen Creek subdivisions, and part of my concern, you've pretty much addressed, was the infrastructure, the support, the volume of subdivisions we're seeing going up in that area right now. You need to sit out on Highway 50 in the morning and understand what I'm talking about. So that's my primary concern, is do we have the infrastructure to support all these subdivisions going in? We've got two brand-new ones that are being cleared now, and then this one. So I'd just like to make sure that we're thinking about what it is we're doing going forward.
Thank you.
So that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Yes, we share some of the same concerns, don't we?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Thank you.
Next one is Chris Driver.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Chris Driver. I'm at 5128 Glen Creek Trail. You'll probably hear from a few of us tonight. Thankfully, a number of the concerns that we did have have been addressed primarily around the construction traffic through Glen Creek. As you know, Glen Creek is an ETJ, so we don't have sidewalks. Our roads aren't necessarily as wide as other Garner neighborhoods. We also don't have, some of us would say, we don't have a top coat on our neighborhood, so our road is quickly deteriorating, but that's an issue for the developer and DOT to deal with. But that is a concern of ours, considering any extra traffic that would come through Glen Creek. So I'm happy to hear that there will be no construction traffic. We want to ensure that that remains. I will say, and again, put another plug in for the gate, a gate between Bethel Green and Altamont. And I think one of my neighbors will speak on that as well. He lives right there, where that gate would go. It's two miles from the entrance of Glen Creek to that back part of Glen Creek neighborhood on Altamont. Today, we have one entrance in, you know, in and out, and Bethel Green will have multiple entrances into that neighborhood from what I can see on the plan. Given that we are an ETJ and given that our road is going to look a little bit different, we feel that having additional traffic through Glen Creek will be a detriment to our neighborhood and unnecessary, given that it's two miles to get in or out to that point of Bethel Green. Another point I would like to make, I know this was brought up at the prior meetings, is the natural screening between Glen Creek and Bethel Green. It was stated 25 to 35 feet, I believe. I don't know if that number has changed, but we do have screening, a lot of trees there today, and would like to ensure that there is privacy or as many trees remain and that that is not clear-cut, given that there are a number of neighbors that backed onto that property today and have a number of trees that we enjoy. And then the last part is infrastructure. I know a lot of people have talked about this, I'll talk about it as well. Obviously, we are very concerned about the infrastructure. I don't want to beat a dead horse. 50 is a nightmare for a number of us that commute. We deal with that every day. Another one that's near and dear to my heart is, we don't have a middle school. I have two children at Bryan Road. In a few years, they will go to middle school. Bryan Road's essentially at capacity. We've got all these neighborhoods being built. Where are the kids going to go? And I have friends that don't even know if their kids will get into Bryan Road that live within the area. So that's a huge concern for us, is there should be a middle school there, but there isn't. So where are these kids going? And that's an additional traffic concern that you're going to see three to four years down the road that we need to consider as well. So that's what I wanted to share tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your thoughtful presentation.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones?
Pat Donegan.
My name's Pat. I also live in Glen Creek neighborhood, just a few houses down from Chris. Wholeheartedly agree with the observations that the council has found here tonight, as well as some of the statements that Chris has made. I do want to thank Timmons for being very accommodating to us, being, you know, super transparent along the way, holding multiple presentations, giving us a line of sight into what's coming. Infrastructure is what I want to reinforce. They were very gracious to add the fencing at the end of Altamont. My house is at the end of Altamont, and as you stated, sir, it is very jam-packed. There's seven homes that touch my property line at the back of the neighborhood, which is very concerning, especially if there's no gate or perimeter buffer, natural fencing that can be built alongside. So that's a concern of mine. To steal Chris's words, I won't beat a dead horse there, but just last month, we were told, I've got a three-and-a-half-year-old boy that I'm going through the pre-K enrollment process at Bryan Road Elementary. They said, Mr. Donegan, we're happy to enroll him in pre-K, but just wanted to be upfront and honest with you that he likely won't have a place here for elementary school due to capacity. Don't know if there's any merit or truth to that, but I didn't know that there wasn't a middle school in the area. I'm not there yet as a young dad, but that is very concerning. I wasn't offered any sort of, where can I take my kid next year for school? Where are we going to go? Do I need to homeschool? Do I need to look at private school? Do I need to branch into Johnston County for schooling to go through that approval process? I just don't have a way or path forward to, you know, focus on my family at this time when it comes to school. But, you know, infrastructure's top of mind, at least for everyone in Glen Creek right now, in terms of what we can preserve at our neighborhood, being roughly 100 homes up against all the new townhome-style neighborhoods and single-detached that are wildly different than what we invested in years ago. So that's all for me. Appreciate you hearing me tonight.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments, observations. Ms. Jones, another speaker?
Kay Jensen.
Kay Jensen, 5155 Glen Creek Trail. HOA elected treasurer, secretary. As Chris and Patrick have already said, we've pretty much said everything that we wanted to, and thank you guys for mentioning all the stuff that we have been meaning about and trying your best to get these things through. Just want to reiterate one more time, we have 22-foot roads. We don't have any striping. We don't have any sidewalks or anything. We've got to make sure that construction traffic does not come down our roads. We have nine houses. It's a two-foot road. We have three different sections. We do have DOT approval for Glen Creek as well as Blendon. We have not got the DOT approval for Altamont because of the lack of turnaround. So I think the developer probably always planned to go into the new subdivision, you know, and no one was expecting it to come this fast. So I think all of us were thought, we were 10 to 20 years in the future. I don't know, I'm sure some of y'all are doing it, our concern is the infrastructure. It can take as much as 30 minutes to go from Timber Drive to New Bethel. 30 minutes because of the stoplights and trying to go that way. At Christmas time, you can't go down White Oak. It'll take you 30 to 45 minutes to get home. So then you have to, you try to go, okay, well, I can go to Eversboro to Buffalo and then back to, you know, 50. So we haven't even added all these additional Pulte homes and everybody else, and we're already having these pain points in traffic. Please, please consider this, getting those roads taken care of before we add a whole lot more homes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. More speakers?
Those are all the members of the public who signed up to speak.
Okay, excellent. We really appreciate the representation and the dialogue you've been having with the town, with the developers, with the neighbors over the previous months. I think all that communication is good, and we're trying to reach some resolutions here today.
Can I make one response? Mr. Driver talked about middle schools and lack of and so forth. There was one, you know, planned at one time beside Bryan Road. Let me just tell you this, I graduated from Garner High School in 1980, and I went to then junior high, and now middle school. There was only East Garner and North Garner back then, and there's only East Garner and North Garner today. Now, we doubled high schools and we doubled elementary schools, and some kids go to over off of Tryon Road, name escapes me all of a sudden, but that's where some kids in year-round school have gone, in middle school. So there are plans to both expand and build new middle schools at both North Garner and East Garner. I know they've been talking to our planning staff for some time. So I think, I mean, any capacity can happen at North Garner, but I think East Garner is one reason they're trying to expand. But anyway, we can't hold our breath, because when I was growing up, where Timber Drive is, that's where the middle school was going to go, or the junior high back then. And so I don't mean to be the bearer of bad news about middle schools, but I don't think you can see, I don't think we're going to see an additional one. You may see two new ones that have some capacity, but that's just the way it is right now.
Other questions or comments from council? Well, I've got a comment or two to make. Just in general, I'd like to shout out a couple of thank yous to the development team here, and then toss out a couple of challenges before we move along toward a vote. We know that typically, the process, after this hearing, this information moves on to the planning commission, who digs in a little deeper, addresses many of the issues here in more detail that have come up tonight, and then it comes back to this council for a final decision about the rezoning. I think these particular developers have been some of the most conscious of the Garner Forward Plan. I'll never forget, one of the first meetings, not really. Never forget, one of the first meetings, not related to this project, but another, where we met Mr. Berger, he walked in with the Garner Forward Plan in his hand. He said, we've been studying this for two years, as you've been working on it too. We want to do what Garner wants us to do. So that's the right attitude for sure. Hats off to your development crew. You heard us loud and clear when we said, single family detached. Please, no more townhomes, no more apartments in that kind of semi rural, semi suburban. There's a place for those when they have a special, a special purpose, whether it's senior housing, whether it's affordable housing. But this is maybe not the place for it. Thank you for picking up on a single family. And thank you for your commitment to the connectivity, both of vehicles and pedestrians. Those are big positives. We really appreciate that. The two challenges I would throw out to some of the most forward thinking developers here, we haven't talked much about tonight, that is long term financial stability that we talk about in the Garner Forward Plan. And this has to do with the cost of services and the amount of property tax revenue from the new units that are built. Please keep that in mind. We've just gone through this and you've already committed to high quality, which sometimes means high end dwelling units here. That's good. That does seem to be in line in a general way with our need for long term financial stability. That the tax value, the assessed tax value will generate more revenue than it costs to provide the services. So please keep that in mind. By the same token, my challenge to you is how do you meet that goal? And also meet a little bit of, I'm not even going to use the A word, affordable, but how about workforce? Wouldn't it be nice if a few policemen or firemen or town employees or teachers could live in this wonderful subdivision that you have drawn out here? How to do that? I don't know. But you guys do it for a living. You're creative, you're forward thinking. Could there be a few cottages in there that are set aside in some way for these critical workers that are so important? That's just one challenge. And then my last challenge or last question from my wish list, nobody thinks about the old people anymore, and I'm one. I'm one of the, I'm one of the poor, one of the old people. We hear about 60 people a day moving into Wake County. 60 people a day moving into Wake County. This is a well established number. The staggering part is that almost half of those are 55 or older. And if you're 55 or older and you move into a house where your bedroom is upstairs, you're going to be frustrated maybe sooner instead of later. I always have a dream of any of these subdivisions, any of these projects, that maybe there's some houses in there that I could live in one day. But if it's got a second store, second story primary bedroom, either my knees are good, my wife's are failing, and she might be able to get through it a couple more years. But how about our dog who's got bad hips, you know? And, you know, at some point, man, we really need a downstairs primary. Be thinking about this. How do you build that in for the aging population? Not to even mention younger people who have mobility issues. It's not all handicapped accessible. It doesn't need to be an elevator in every house. But come on, 20, 30% of them make it where I could sleep in there one day. Knees and all. Okay, so that's just observations where we're chatting. Again, the planning commission will have another public hearing. I'd like them to hear the same comments that have been made. I'd like you to take some of these challenges and handle these the way you've done other things. Yes, we continue to work through this through the planning commission, but then back to this council at a future date for a final decision on the requested rezoning. A lot of factors, a lot of good input. That being said, before we close the discussion, any other observations or questions?
Just one, Mr. Mayor. I do want to congratulate the developers as well, trying to work very much with the residents in that area. Traffic is a problem. And I appreciate Mr. Singleton and staff looking at, we know it's going to cap off. It's kind of what I got on traffic and knowing that, that's, that's an important thing to know. A lot of us maybe had not thought about that, and I appreciate him bringing that up and getting us an answer on that. But, and I do agree with you that I'm almost as old as the mayor, maybe.
Not quite.
Not quite. Just within a few months. But those downstairs bedrooms for seniors, keep it in the back of your mind because if you're, if you're not that way right now, you will be too one day. So, and I got stairs in my house and it's, it's tough. But fortunately, we did a master downstairs. So, but, but just keep that in the back of your mind as you develop that, the products that you know people are going to want. And, but it's been a good presentation here tonight.
Thank you. Other observations, comments, questions?
Yeah, just appreciation for all the work with staff with regards to the internal mechanics and movement within the property. To actually talk about what Mr. Matthews and the mayor said, larger lot sizes allow for single family homes with some square footage. When the lot sizes get really small, you've got to go up to get the square footage. You kill several birds with one stone, you're going to kill all the birds we have that we're throwing at you. There's, you know, we've talked about workforce houses, we've talked about wider lots. Touch on aggressively, go after a few of those problems to make the project stand out head and shoulders above anything else we're going to see. Like I said, I'd like to see a few units, but the single, those single story, those ranch style homes, there's definitely a market for those. But again, it's hard to put it on a 42 foot wide lot, so.
And just to really add to the, as Garner works through the process of establishing an affordable housing policy, I would say just think about that as well as you look at this project and out to the other developers as we try to see how affordable housing fits within the framework of Garner.
Thank you. A lot of excellent ideas we've come up with, a lot of good questions, a lot of tough questions. With that, I think I will close the public hearing at this point. And I'll ask council members if there's a motion to refer this case to the planning commission.
So moved.
Suck it. Mr. Vance makes the motion. Mr. Matthews seconds the motion. And let's try a voice vote like we did. All in favor of referring this on to the planning commission, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed by nay.
No.
Okay, there's one no and four yeses for referring to the planning commission. So this does pass to be referred to the planning commission, where I know they will do their usual good job and we will plant all the seeds that we planted here and carry all the information that we've heard from the citizens. And I really request the citizens show up again at the planning commission, be heard again. Put your input there, see how many of these issues we can address. It just works its way through the decision making process. I want to thank everybody for their civility and their open mindedness, their cooperative way of working through this. That's good citizenship at work. So thank you very much. With that being said, we'll close the discussion on that one.
Mr. Mayor, I do have to add to the, just for the record, for planning commission, my no vote is that I don't feel that the R8 is appropriate and the lack of workforce and affordable housing.
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, and a comment.
My comment is, welcome back, Ashley. It's good to have you back, ladies.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
Okay, good. Well, thank you very much. We'll pass this along and we'll be sending this one back before us again in the future date. Thanks for everyone who's participated. Okay, let's move along to number three on the public hearings tonight, which is a tier two conditional rezoning request for pool drive, commercial and fuel sales over there. Our presenter tonight will be Erin Joseph, the Assistant Planning Director. If you would, please give us a little overview of project here and what's being asked and what the details are.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, council members and the members of the public. I will be presenting the rezoning case, CZMP 2306, also known as Pool Drive Commercial and Fuel Sales. Can you all hear me okay? I want to make sure.
Yes, ma'am. That's even better.
Great. All right, there you go. So the applicant is Rakish Kumar and the property owner is AVA Property LLC. This request is a tier two conditional rezoning to rezone 1.88 acres from neighborhood mixed use to commercial mixed use as well as neighborhood mixed use, both conditional, for the development of a convenience store with fuel sales and a retail center. The site is located at 900 and 910 Pool Drive. The neighborhood mixed use district is intended for low intensity commercial operations that provide goods and services to the nearby adjacent residents in surrounding neighborhoods. It's typically found within our corporate limits where water and public, public water and sewer are readily available. Currently, this site is, has a convenience store with fuel sales. It's been there for a number of years, also known as webs. And the adjacent site is currently vacant. Looking at the context of the surrounding area, there are a mix of zoning districts. You have the R2 district to the north of the site, NMX to the south, and MFA on the western boundary of the site. This area is typically quiet and residential with convenient access to local businesses. You do have Eversboro Square just across from the site. And again, water and sewer will connect from Pool Drive. The site is located within an activity center. It is located within the neighborhood activity center along Eversboro Road. And Eversboro Road itself connects a mixed use activity center to the north, the Forest Hills community, as well as another neighborhood activity center located at Timber Drive. Eversboro Road is an NC DOT maintained road and is classified as a secondary route. The most recent traffic counts for Eversboro Road reveal that just south of Lakeside Drive was 8,590 average daily trips. And that data was collected in September of 2023. So the two districts that are being requested, commercial mixed use and neighborhood mixed use, the applicant has narrowed the possible 60 uses out of the CMX district down to 14. And then within the NMX district, the applicant has narrowed the permissible uses, possible uses to 13 out of 37. The primary difference of these two districts is CMX allows fuel sales and the NMX district does not. Other conditions that have been proffered include buildings, the buildings will be limited to one story. They have included no parking signs that will be purchased and installed along the side of Pool Drive that fronts at Pool Drive and 1400 Eversboro Road. That is pending council approval. The developer shall install an outdoor plaza with covered seating between the new retail building and Pool Drive. And the developer has committed to installing pedestrian seating along the sidewalk connections to Pool Drive and Eversboro Road. Also, the developer will install a painted crosswalk at the intersection of Eversboro and Pool Drive from the northwest corner to the southwest corner of the intersection. Additionally, they have committed to architectural standards. The building facade materials shall be consistent between the two buildings. The architectural elements will include a brick facade with aluminum storefront systems for transparency. There will be a minimum two brick colors with soldier bond brick course above the storefront windows and sections of the pitched asphalt shingle roofs and metal canopies. The developer shall provide and record with Wake County Register of Deeds a shared parking agreement between 900 and 910 Pool Drive. The developer will also include native plant materials that have been proven to thrive during droughts and heavy rains. Also regarding parking signs, the developer is committing to installing no parking signs on the south side of Pool Drive along project frontage with one sign at every 100 feet. Just wanted to point out the two conditions that are very similar regarding the parking signs. So essentially, they are committing to these no parking signs, again, pending council's approval on both sides of Pool Drive. These conditions really came from feedback from the neighborhood meetings and the developer listening to the concerns of the residents in the area. And so that's why you have two very similar no parking conditions, but they will be addressing both sides of Pool Drive. They are willing to restrict vape stores as a use that is not permitted. And this came through with conversations via email with the, with the development team. And they have also, again, with the Pool Drive parking, since parking in adjacent residential development is not known to meet the current minimum requirements. So there may be some conflict between the condition of the no parking, but with concerns of limiting and restricting parking in the area. And so just want to point that out for you all to keep in mind. And then lastly, the developer hasn't included a condition for a six foot black vinyl chain link fence. On the screen, you have an image of the master plan, gives you a basic layout of what is being proposed. So this site is two properties. They will be adjusting their property line. So the front section, here is where the existing building and a proposed expansion of the existing building. So that total square footage would be 4,500 square feet between the two buildings. And this is the site that would include the CMX conditional. The site here would be the NMX conditional, which includes the new retail building, which is 5,000 square feet. Here you can see the commitment of the open space plaza area, if you will, outdoor seating. Again, just to summarize the data included in this master plan, it is 1.88 acres. And it will be requesting CMX and NMX, again, a total of 4,500 square feet. The existing building is 2,400 square feet and the proposed building expansion is 2,100 square feet. Per our development standards, 9,835 square feet of tree canopy is required. And the applicant is providing 18,000 square feet of tree canopy preservation in addition to new canopy. Regarding parking, convenience stores with fuel sales are required to have nine. They have provided 14, and this does not include the fueling spaces. The sales and retail in the new building would require 20 parking spaces, and they have provided 23. And it would be evaluated, again, with those parking standards at zoning compliance permitting. This property is located within a watershed protection area, so it is subject to water quality, nitrogen and quantity requirements. 85% total suspended solid treatment. Eighty-five percent total suspended solid treatment is other, other required quantity requirements for, for stormwater. They are providing one surface stormwater control measure. And again, City of Raleigh will provide the site with water and sewer connecting from Pool Drive. There will be two access points for this site. One is a proposed full access driveway from Averus Borough Road and one shared drive along Pool Dr- Pool Drive. A T I A was not required by the Town of Garner, nor was it required by N C D O T. It did not meet the thresholds that would typically trigger a traffic impact analysis. However, the development team did secure a trip generation letter with a traffic engineer with Raimi Kemp. And so that traffic generation le- letter did provide some estimated trip generation data. So this development is proposed is expected to generate four hundred eighty-one average daily trips. In the peak A M hours, it is expected to generate twenty-three inbound and twenty-one outbound. During the P M peak hours, it is expected to generate twenty-nine inbound and twenty-eight outbound trips. Due to the size of this development, there, and the proportional impact to traffic, there were no off-site tra- road improvements recommended. There is an existing stream on the western boundary of the site, so there are associated buffers associated with this project. There were three hundred and fifty-two properties identified within the required notification area. And the applicant did conduct two neighborhood meetings, which you had twelve attendees at the first meeting held in twenty twenty-three. And there was a second meeting with eleven attendees held this year in July. And you do have that full meeting information. Regarding the framework, the na- the site is located within a neighborhood activity center. It is identified as a retail area on the character typology, typology matrix. And this area is also identified as a level-three area to enhance. As this site was analyzed against our comprehensive land use plan, there were ten growth framework criteria that were evaluated. There were nine that were strongly consistent and one strongly inconsistent. The inconsistency stemmed from the lack of an identified pocket park. However, we do note that they have committed to a small outdoor plaza. And the, there are, there's one point four miles to South Garner Park. Looking at the land use and commu- community character consistency, seventeen criteria were determined to be applicable. At this time, consistency is modestly supported. Believe that minor changes help to achieve this modest support. Emphasis on the public realm and the use of open space to create a central focal point to the neighborhood. And also the proffering of the additional conditions, such as the architectural standards, the crosswalk connectivity, spoke more specifically to the comprehensive plan and helped to achieve that modest consistency today. But with fine tuning, we do believe that this tool can be updated and staff could expect to have a stronger support of consistency and overall finding of consistency. The next steps this evening is to finish conducting the ne- the public hearing. And hopefully, we will pass this on pending decision from council tonight to refer it to Planning Commission. And then Planning Commission will review for consistency. And finally, it will come back for your review of reasonableness and a decision to approve or deny. The applicant is here this evening. They have prepared a presentation, and I also am available for questions that you may have. And thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Jones. Very informative. Yeah, let's hear from the applicant.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me? So far, so good. Okay. Thank you, Mayor, council members, for your time this evening. My name is Sam Nye. I'm a civil engineer at the Site Group in Raleigh, eleven eleven Oberland Road, Raleigh, North Carolina. I'm here representing the owner of A V A Properties, L L C. Nine hundred Pool Drive is currently home to the Easy Way Convenience Store and Gas Station. I think it's better known as Webbs. The, the existing building was constructed in nineteen seventy-five, previously operated under the name of Kate Webbs. Both of the properties that you see on your screen are currently zoned N M X. Nine hundred Pool Drive, it's half an acre. It contains the twenty-four hundred square foot convenience store with two fuel pumps and the canopy. Nine ten is one point three four acres, and it's currently vacant. I'm gonna skip this one and come back to it. The applicant wishes to remove the two existing pumps, the canopy, the underground tank. They wish to install four new pumps, a new canopy, and a new underground storage tank for the fuel. During the site plan process, we were informed we could not expand the existing fuel pumps without requesting a rezoning to C M X. So we actually submitted the site plan first and got a comment that we needed a rezoning. And so we've been working both of those processes concurrently, and that's where we are today. The owner would like to expand the existing convenience store by two thousand one hundred square feet. This area would allow them room for a kitchen to prepare food for sale within the C store. The area would also allow for additional shelving and merchandise in the store. They, they also want to update the facade and modernize the look of the building. We need to relocate the existing property line to the west. And it's about forty or fifty feet for, to make room for the new pumps and the building expansion. We're requesting a rezoning to C M X conditional use to allow the fuel pumps to be expanded. We are severely limiting the uses allowed in the C M X zone to bring those uses in line to what an N M X zone would be, with the exception of being allowed to expand the fuel pumps. This is just a kind of a map and Googled some fuel stations. The Easy Way, you know, we're proposing four pumps right now. There are two. Loads, Loads Fuel has six pumps. It's about a mile away. The B P ha- is about a mile away. It has six. There's a, there's a really small B P, older B P station there that has two pumps. And I think we just got that wrong, because when I, I looked at, there's, there's two pumps with a canopy, and then there's a, a little diesel pump and a little something else pump. So there's, there's a few more there. And then the Sheets down near forty has eight pumps, and that's, that's a ways away. So this fuel center, one thing I just wanted to point out is that for that whole neighborhood around there, it's, it's a really convenient location. And, you know, people are, I guess, used to going there. Shows, you already seen this. It shows the, the general buildings, the sizes, the uses, the zoning requested. I do want to point out that all of the area in the N M X zone right here, this is, that whole area is already zoned N M X. And we're, we're asking to make it N M X conditional use. And there's, there's, you know, I don't know, thirty-seven possible uses that could go there by right. But, you know, what we want to do is, is improve the fueling station and, 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 and get that C M X. So we're including that N M X as part of this rezoning to, to be able to put conditions on it to tell, you know, the neighbors that asked us for things in that area, we're willing to do these things, even though that area, you know, probably shouldn't be on this map, and we shouldn't be talking about it. We're trying to, we want, we, this is what they want to do, and it's kind of all they want to do. They want to u- update the fuel center and do this retail. So we're kind of hampering the uses that could go there in an effort to make it more palatable for, you know, the, the council or, or, or the neighbors and, and, and the community. This just shows kind of a detailed breakdown by property. You can see that as we move that property line to the west, Lot One, which is the existing fuel station, gets bigger and the vacant lot gets smaller. One thing I want to point out on this is, you know, parking has been an issue with the neighbors, and we've been talking about it, you know, since the first meeting. Code says we need nine. We came in with eleven in our second meeting. They wanted more. You know, we've also done all the stormwater calculations on this project. So we're pushing the envelope for, for making the impervious surface work. We found a way to, to add three parking spaces at the fuel center, bringing it from eleven to fourteen. And there's a typo on my thing. There's, there's fourteen parking spaces on, on that site, and then eight at the pump. So if we have four pumps and a parking spot on each side, that number should say eight. But, so a total of twenty-two if you count the spaces at the pump. And then twenty-three for the retail, so there's a little bit of an overage there. I know one thing that was brought up in both of the meetings was not having parking on Pool. And, you know, customers that are coming to this store parking on the street, and the neighborhood wanted to do away with that. You know, obviously, you know, you guys know that area a lot better than we do. If, if, if you want that, we can go with it. If you don't want it, we can take it off. We want to make the neighbors happy, but we also want to, you know, respect that the people down, further down the street. Maybe the signs need to stop at a place so that people in that residential neighborhood, if they need to park on the street, they can. So. Keep going. That was, that was tough to read. It's the zoning conditions from our drawing. And what, what I did want to bring up was that in a previous neighborhood meeting, the neighbors had said, no vape shops, no C B D shops, no fish tables, which I didn't know what that was, or electronic gam- gambling machines shall be allowed at nine ten Pool Drive. That's that new retail building. So we're happy to agree to that. We want to make sure. I didn't realize you could get that specific with the uses when looking at our, the use table. You know, it, but we're happy to provide that. And I just wanted to highlight that we want to do that. This is just a blown-up image, so that sometimes in these, I can't quite see the map. And that helps me have a blow-up there. The required buffer, buffering and tree coverage, there's the U D O, I think we're in pretty good shape here as far as meeting the U D O. We're keeping that, the, the blue area is the area where there's required buffers. And then the dark green on the right are the areas where we're gonna leave the existing tree cover there. And then all the little circles and, are all the different types of, you know, plantings that we're proposing. Street trees along both streets. One, one thing that I want to point out is we're adding a sidewalk along Pool Drive. That was something that some of the neighbors talked about. It'd be nice to be able to walk down there. There were also some people that, you know, would cut through this property to go other places. And so that sidewalk was, you know, added. I can't remember if it's an actual site plan requirement, but either way, it's on there. And the, the building architecture plans and renderings have been updated to reflect and mimic the surrounding existing buildings. This is the rendering of the existing fueling center. And it stops right about there. And then this is the new. It has asphalt shingles, brick accents to match the townhouses across the street, and awnings, and storefront glass to match the building with this kind of catty corner across the Averus Borough Coffee Building. And that's catty corner across the intersection. This is the rendering of the new retail building. It's got the same type of stuff. We've made efforts to help this project to fit into the surrounding area, be acceptable to the neighbors, and obviously to, to the council. We feel like expanding the pumps is necessary to revitalize and modernize this station. We've made multiple concessions and commitments, starting with N C D O T. This project first came to me in twenty twenty-two, and the owner was looking at purchasing it and wanted to know if he could get that driveway on Averus Borough was acceptable. And they, the D O T immediately asked us to remove those parking spaces that are on the east side of the existing building, because they're just not safe for people pulling in and out of there. If you can picture that station in your head, there's, I don't know, three or four parking spaces that D O T said, hey, those have got to go. So we, we did that. And then the, a big point was moving the driveway on Pool Drive further away from Averus Borough Pool Drive. So I measured it in our CAD file. The existing driveway is about there. It's about a hundred and ten feet that we moved it to the west. And that kind of influenced, you know, where that kink in our driveway is so that we can get that as far away from there as we could. For the town, you know, we, we, their, their idea to add the outdoor plaza was a very good one. The pedestrian connections, the adjacent bike parking. We provided twenty-one percent tree cover on the site, which is, which is a good bit over the, what the code requires. The sidewalk along Pool Drive, the crossing across Pool Drive to the south. For the neighbors, we added the three parking spaces since our second neighborhood meeting. We added a cross parking agreement between the two properties so that if there's overflow parking one way or the other, that people that park at the retail are allowed to park at the gas, and people that park at the gas are allowed to park at the retail. We added a fountain to the pond, the no parking signage. One of the neighbors wanted a six-foot fence kind of along the back of this and then tying into that so that people, people were kind of, I guess, cutting through his property as they were walking places. So we, we added that. And we also excluded many uses from C M X and N M X to try to make this more palatable so that you could see what it is, you know, what it, you know, this is all we're trying to do. So. Prohibit the vape shops, which I think is, is good for everybody. So we appreciate your time, attention, and are here to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Very informative. And let me ask the council members at this point, if you have any questions for our applicant or for the staff.
Oh, yes, I do. And you mentioned earlier in your briefing that this store is formerly known named Webbs, built in nineteen seventy-five, and it had gas, gas pumps then.
Yes, sir.
And I'm assuming that with the in, with the in, with the type of zone it's currently had- And I'm assuming that with the inn, with the type of zone it's currently have, they would grandfathered in into the whole process. Are the pumps currently working?
No, sir. They're not.
They're not?
They're not.
And what I'm also hearing is that for the rezoning, your rezoning is needed in order to get the fuel cells.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. But everything else will be, would fall within the permitted uses as is?
Yeah. The entirety of the left side of that plan is, would be by right. We're just adding these conditions because this is what this, they've already bought the property. They own fuel stations, you know, we've been, you know, that's what they want to do with this one. They want to, you know, give it a facelift. The tanks are aged. They need to be replaced. And it doesn't make financial sense to replace two fuel pumps with two fuel pumps in today's gas station. I don't exactly understand why, but it's, there's something about like getting the amount of petroleum in and getting, you need fuel for pumps on a modern station.
Good. That's all I have.
A question for the applicant and then a question for staff. I saw the voluntary opt out on the vape shops, but I don't see it, and this is a question for staff too. I didn't see it in our conditions as they were presented or in the use table, so I'm curious about that. And then two, in what you showed, I only saw it for 910 Pool and not for 900.
Well, so I think in the, so to answer the first bit, I added that after I last submitted to them as I talked to Jeff about it and realized that I should have done that. And so we added it for this meeting, but we're going to fix that and make that consistent.
Okay. I just want to make sure, so it's for both parcels, both all buildings? Because what you showed on your slide show, it's just 910.
Right. So they do sell vape products in the fuel station now at 900. So if we can define the difference between a vape shop and a convenience store that sells vape?
Well, this is, that's where I would like, before this goes to planning commission, to work that out with planning and the attorney because it's a very specific narrow niche that you're trying to fit. And the fact that it's not in our packet means I didn't get a chance to ask staff about it before we got here. And I hear what you're saying, you've got an existing sales that are going on. That's fine and you don't want to expand, but I don't like it sort of presented in a way where it's not explicitly stated that that's kind of what's going on or how that condition is going to be worded for the other, the new use. So doing stuff last minute is not usually a good idea.
Yeah.
And then I have a question for staff. There was a statement in the report, there's been a previous report of contamination due to leaking underground storage tank. It's staff's belief that the remediation has been completed for the contaminated soils, but require documentation from the state and soil testing part of site plan approval. What documentation's been presented to staff on that leak, the fix, the remediation and the current soil conditions?
I believe this is coming from Stormwater from Engineering in their review of the site. As the applicant stated, they have submitted their site plan. And so I believe staff is still waiting on that, that report to confirm that the soils have been remediated. And so that is, that's related specifically to the site plan approval and as they review their site, at that site plan level.
Yeah. Because we have very, we have sort of a similar issue. Some have questions on what type of environmental testing are going to be required. We had a similar issue with Park Golf and there were questions, when they were asked, was there a phase one? And this is a different situation. They'd say, oh, well, the soil will be fixed and they would never. So I have concerns, particularly because this is in the drinking supply watershed. So I also have concerns, there's a lot of soil disturbance in doing this expansion. I also have concerns that it only is a containment, 25 flood, 25 year containment and it's a stream right behind it. So I've got a couple of very serious concerns around environmental elements of the project and specificity around the voluntary restrictions you've put that have not been sort of vetted by staff yet. So those are my only comments at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I have a question. I appreciate the restrictions on the vape shops and fish tables, et cetera. Have you been given any indication of what would go there?
I know they're looking for a sub shop, sandwiches, a sub shop or a small restaurant or a nail salon, any retail that's, you know, that's listed, that's not those more noxious ones we label.
Thank you.
It's a speculative retail at this point. They don't have leases and tenants.
Okay. Mr. Singleton?
Got a question for staff, Ms. Joseph. So we've heard of the CMX and NMX difference and they've grandfathered in. So, but if this proposal doesn't pass, would they still be allowed to have the two fuel pumps if they replace the tanks and put the equipment in? Would they still be allowed to have two pumps?
I believe that they would be able to continue with the existing pumps that they have today, those two, those two pumps. They would be allowed to continue with that as a non-conforming use, but they would, they would not be able to expand that use. So yes, they could.
Okay. Just wanted to understand that they can still have fuel cells there if it's not passed, but as Mr. Nye has stated, they wanted additional pumps, you know, can have, you know, more than two. I understand all that since I see stores, see stores quite a bit in my work. So I just wanted to confirm that was the case. It's non-conforming use, but it's grandfathered in and still would be allowed to do what they've been doing since 1975?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Good. And I remember when that store opened and Pool Road was a dirt road and there was nothing but woods around it except to the west and to the north where Lakeside Drive is. We would ride our bike up there. That was the place to go, boy. That's the closest place you could get back in the day. But anyway, you remember it too, don't you?
Sure. Things change.
That's the only question I have right now. Thank you.
Mr. Matthews?
Yeah. Just a couple of questions. On the retail building, how many, it popped up while I go and I didn't get a good look at, how many different store, how many, what's the number of stores in that building? Or is, could it be just one big one or how many?
So it's set up with five 20-foot bays. So you could have up to five 20-foot wide stores or, you know, two 40s and a 10. So it's, it's set up, I mean, ideally you'd not get five, you know, 20-foot wide stores. It'd probably be, my guess is three, but 5,000 square feet total, right?
And my other question is, does the applicant have any other retail businesses in Garner?
Yes, they do. I might have to ask them what they are.
And where are they?
Okay. Can he come up and tell you? He's on the list.
He'll just have to identify himself for the record.
Or he can tell me and I can tell you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So our existing gas station is on, oh, Karan Kumar, 900 Pool Drive, Garner, North Carolina. So our existing gas station is on Highway 70, Sashell Gas Station, 1305 Highway 70 West.
Is that the one next to the church over there?
Yes, right across.
Okay.
Right, right before Temple Drive.
Okay. That was it?
Okay. Let me ask our attorney here, do we have some individuals signed up to speak?
Yes, sir.
How many do we have?
It's like six.
Six, okay. Then I'm going to call for a 10.
I'm sorry, five.
Excuse me. Okay. I don't want to rush this. I hate to break off one in the middle, but we're past the two hour mark. So let's take a 10-minute recess and come back and we'll start out by hearing from the members of the public who have signed up to speak. So it's about 13 past, so about 23 past. Please be back in your seats and we'll push ahead. Thank you.[1161.51]
The magic tone, it came over, said proceed. So we're being broadcast, we're being recorded. Thank you for your promptness and your patience as we move through this very important item. I did not want to rush through the public, members of the public who have some testimony to make here. And if you'll call our first speaker, please.
The first speaker is Lee West.
And if you would state your name and address for the record, and we're eager to hear what you have to say.
Good evening, Mayor Gupta and town council members. An exciting time we live in Garner. My name is Lee West. I live at 351 Bailey Court, Garner, North Carolina. This evening, I stand and speak in opposition to the conditional rezoning request for 90910 Pool Drive. I attended both neighborhood meetings regarding the development, but I left each session still seeking answers to some of the questions posed to the applicant. Inquiries including worries about congestion at the intersection with heightened traffic risk, parking challenges, the lack of need for fuel sales at the site. Pedestrian safety, property and property maintenance were not answered or satisfactorily addressed. For congestion, the intersection of Pool Drive and Abersburg Road is highly congested at most times during the day. Local businesses, high-density residential areas, nearby schools and daycare centers, plus three bus stops within 500 feet of the intersection already contribute to vehicle congestion. To quote the traffic generation letter supplied by the applicant, "The buildout of the development is expected to generate approximately 481 new trips during a typical 24-hour weekday period," end quote. Assuming that the businesses will not be open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, the hourly trip increase will be somewhere around 30 to 40 per hour. Visibility of southbound vehicles on Abersburg Road is currently limited due to the area topography and the orientation of Abersburg Road. Visibility is likely to be further limited by the required plantings and landscape buffer, thus increasing risks to vehicular and pedestrian traffic. One of the neighborhood meeting attendees commented that the intersection will be considered safe until there's a serious accident. Parking issues. As noted in the site plan, there are currently 13 parking places, including the fuel aisle, to accommodate business done in a 2,400-square-foot building. After buildout of phase one of the project, there will be 20 parking spaces, including the fuel aisle, to accommodate business done in a 4,500-square-foot building. One merely only needs to apply arithmetic to conclude that the math just doesn't work for parking. During weekend hours, up to 15 vehicles can be seen at the 2,400-square-foot convenience store parking lot, none of which will be purchasing fuel. Within the past 10 days, vehicles of the store's customers have been parked on the south side of Pool Drive. Several years ago, when this property was still forested and undeveloped, there was a need for a convenience store with fuel sales on the outskirts of Garner. This need supported the NMX zoning designation. However, the demand for a convenience store with fuel sales at this location has since declined. This is reflected in the absence of fuel sales at the site for the past three years. Furthermore, there is already a gas station located less than a mile away. Pedestrian safety. Currently, a pedestrian will need to wait up to 10 minutes to safely cross Abersburg Road at the intersection. The addition of more than 480 vehicle trips after buildout will certainly not increase pedestrian safety. Property maintenance. A look at another property owned by the same applicant situated at 7200 Old Stage Road provides insight into the potential future appearance of 90910 Pool Drive if this fuel station receives approval. Currently, 7200 Old Stage Road presents an unsightly and foreboding image, featuring food trucks and a parking lot marred by pitted asphalt, potholes, and large cracks. This stands in sharp contrast to the enhanced area vision described in the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. Finally, one of the primary concerns of the neighborhood is that the proposed retail center will attract tenants such as a nail salon, a car wash, or a unisex barber shop. The neighborhood is already saturated with these types of businesses, and adding more seems to be inconsistent with the goals outlined in the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. More suitable business options that are neighborhood-friendly would include bistros, sandwich shops, other small-scale eateries, a full-service bakery, a plant store or nursery, a florist, boutique shop, an antique shop, or a locally-owned craft brewery with taproom. River Birch Towns, our community consisting of 69 townhomes, is situated directly across Abersburg Road from the proposed development site. As a director of the homeowners association, I have spoken with many property owners, and there is a strong consensus against the conditional rezoning request and the proposed development. We trust that the town council will consider our concerns and reject the rezoning proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West. Okay, and our next speaker?
Deborah Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, and if you would, yes, pull that down to your.
Okay, and good evening, councilmen, and good evening to everybody else. My name is Deborah Johnson, and I live at 115 Rom Place in Garner, in Kirkwall Villas. My, I bought a townhouse in 2003, and my townhouse is right down the street, straight from Pool Drive, and the convenience store is right down this corner from my house, right back from that convenience store. And since I've been there, traffic has already increased since 2003, you know that. But if we get this center and these extra gas pumps, it's going to increase even more. I like residential. I'm not all about commercial. Where I live, I'd rather be a residential area. And far as Pool Drive, we have two parking spaces to use. Sometimes, some of our residents have three cars. They have to double up parking sometimes, and that's when we use Pool Drive. They have to go out there and park their car on Pool Drive because it's nowhere in the common sense to park their car. And we use Pool Drive when we have to, sometimes they're working on our concrete, like doing something in our common set, and we have to park on Pool Drive our cars. So we do need Pool Drive. And like the gentleman said, this is going to increase traffic. We already have enough traffic. We're going to be going down to Abersburg Road, it's going to be so much traffic we can't get across, somebody has to put up a truck like there. That's what we have to be done, if we have a truck that we have to put up because it's going to be the accident. Because so many people, especially on Abersburg Road between 3:00 and 5:00 o'clock, it's a lot of traffic, a lot of traffic. I don't even like to go out. I like to go during that time. I try to get home by 3:00 o'clock. If I'm going out, well, by 6:00 or something like that, because traffic is very bad during that time. And I'm like the gentleman that was just up here, I'd rather not, we have it. I'd rather just let it stay as residential.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker?
Katie Cardenas.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Katie Cardenas, 1609 South Wade Avenue. I'm a resident in that neighborhood, but I also am the secretary for the HOA for Kirkwall Villas, so I'm speaking today as both of those things. I'm also speaking today as someone who has sat through many, many meetings here, so thank you all for all of the time that you put into this, and I promise I will never be a council member. The first thing that I hear over and over in the town council meetings is White Oak. Everything developing in White Oak, and I only, in all the running that I've done through the neighborhoods of White Oak, I only remember one gas station. So I think it's kind of ironic that we would have a gas station less than a mile from the gas station at Lowe's supermarket when White Oak, you could be stuck in White Oak and never get out because there's miles without gas stations. So, community character. Our community is a neighborhood, it's not commercial, first issue. Second issue, I'm very concerned about the increased traffic. I actually helped a woman who I watched in a car accident right at that intersection. It is dangerous, it is difficult to get in and out, and that is, the end of Pool Drive is where we have soccer fields and softball fields and baseball fields. We have kids that are learning how to drive, and to double the number of gas pumps means a huge increase in the number of people coming in and out. And every time I hear an accident, and I hear them frequently, and when my kids were first driving, I froze, because is that my daughter? And one time, it was a car that looked like my daughter. That's a scary thing, and we don't want to lose people just for the increase of some gas pumps. Now, the sub shop, a sandwich shop, they have prayed for that since it was Castle and since it was Gessel. Sandwich shop would be good, but we don't need to rezone something to increase, to make it more traffic, more gas pumps, more people going through. I also find it ironic that, first of all, parentheses, thank you for increasing bus service to the weekend, but now there's a bus stop because we're trying to increase bus use where we're going to increase or double the number of gas pumps. And then the most important thing for Kirkwall Villas is Kirkwall Villas is grandfathered in to not have enough parking spaces. So we need to have Pool Drive to be able to park. So if there's no parking, more no parking signs going up because half of it already is no parking, then we have no place to park, and we'll be parking down at the soccer field three blocks away. So thank you for your attention, those are my thoughts.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. And our next speaker?
Andrew Futrell?
Futrell.
Futrell, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council, I'm Andy Futrell, 226 Bailey Court, Garner, North Carolina. Wanted to bring up a few things. The crosswalk that was mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, there's no image, and it's not on this drawing, what's the layout going to be? Are there going to be like flashing indicator lights because it's a four-lane road crossing Abersburg, already had a busy intersection over Pool Road, so if you paint a crosswalk there, you're going to have people get hit because people aren't looking for pedestrians. And that location there at the corner, you know, you already have a lot of adjacent homes, but also South Garner Parks right there, you're going to have a lot more traffic than what that projection is showing from trips, just from people passing by due to the convenience. And just wondering what traffic control safety is going to be added, you know, can we have turn lanes, deceleration lanes? I live in earshot of that intersection, and multiple times a week, I can hear squealing tires from people avoiding collisions at that intersection. So I don't know that anyone that's here in the council just needs to spend an afternoon out there and just kind of observe the current traffic behavior, especially in the afternoon, that 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. timeframe. And one other thing that was brought up, Mr. Delgure, you mentioned fuel spill there in the past. How long ago was that? Was that reported to the city of Raleigh? And I mention that because there is a raw water main that's our drinking supply for the region, dissects that property, that needs to be, you know, public knowledge if it hasn't been made aware. I think that's all I have, I just, you know, I think the traffic, you know, situation there really needs to be looked at and reconsidered, you know, I think there needs to be a study done just to kind of look at how to improve safety, not just vehicles, but pedestrians, especially kids going to the park or by foot or by bicycle. Myself, I'm a cyclist, I'm crossing that intersection regularly, and it's going to get much more challenging, you know, with the sightline and the more generated trips by vehicles there.
Thank you very much for your concerns and your expressions. Thank you.
Valerie Harris.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. My name is Valerie Harris, I live at 123 Townview Trail, here in Garner. I'm a little further away, I'm at the Georgetown complex. And I'm not opposed to the expansion, I actually see where the expansion would make a difference and would cure some of the problems that people are complaining about. I also see where it's going to bring in more revenue if he opens those pumps, because there's a tax revenue, and that's going to help to take care of potholes in this community. I see where he's got cigarette taxes, that's revenue for this, for Garner, that's going to help to take care of any other problems. I see where there's a community of people that come together. I've heard complaints about the lottery, and I remember we voted for the lottery. People come in and out. I am, to be transparent, I am a lottery player, and I play twice a day. And most of the time, I play at this establishment, and it's convenient for me. It's more convenient for me to go there than it is for me to go Food Lion on Timber or Food Lion on Fifth Avenue and then get there and the lane is shut down. I work at a gas station, and I pass the Lowe's and can't get gas there early in the morning. They're going to be open early in the morning, so it makes it a convenience for me. I may not be speaking for everybody, but I do believe I'm speaking for more people because I am not the only lottery player that goes there. As for the contamination pumps, I heard you say that he can still use those two pumps. Well, if the soil has been contaminated, guess what? They can't use those old pumps, they have to replace them. So if they're going to replace them, why not replace them with four pumps, make it so people can get in and get out? Two pumps is just going to make it slow. I am really upset that this convenience store seems to be a little under attack. I've heard something about mosquitoes, they're worried about mosquitoes, you know. I take that personal, okay? And when they talk about it's okay to have a sub shop or a sandwich shop or a bakery, that's going to bring more traffic too. So that traffic versus the gas station, what's the difference? In comparison, what's the difference? If you don't put the pumps in, and if he expands and puts more parking, it makes it easier for me to get in and out, and people like me. Now, I see people walking. As for the traffic, it might need something to impede or to slow down the traffic, because coming around that curve, it does get, they speed quite a bit. So I am not against the expansion, I think the expansion makes perfect sense. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your point of view. Is there another speaker?
The only other person who signed up is one of the applicants. I don't believe that person wants to speak, correct? So that will conclude the public comments.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you very much for keeping track of that, that's a lot of input, a lot of thoughts being shared. I think I'll revert back to council members now for further questions or comments for anybody that has staff or applicant. Mr. Matthews, any questions, comments?
Comments.
Mr. Singleton?
I just want to confirm with staff again that if this is denied...
I just want to confirm with staff again that if this is denied, they can still build on the other lot because it's currently zoned for all those uses, whether it's a 5,000 square foot building or something else, they would still be allowed to do something similar to what's shown here because that is allowed by right because it's, uh, the rezoning, uh, and the list of uses that are in here. So they would still be allowed to do that on, on the lot if this gets denied.
Correct. The, this, this lot here, yes, it's zoned N M X. And so they would be, in fact, if it, if it was not rezoned and just left as N M X as a general district, it would be open to all 37 uses, whereas it is now conditioned down to 13 uses.
Okay. I just want everybody to understand that if, if it gets denied, they can still do something on that lot. I think it just needs to be clearly stated so people say, oh my gosh, they're building a lot and y'all denied it. What happened? And everyone would know. So that just, that just needs to be out there clearly for everyone to understand. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And we can also add while he's, while he's stating that if it's, if it's denied, not just saying it's going to be denied because that's go to planning commission for consistency, that, that they still can do the improvements on the existing location as well, meaning that where the existing store is, they still can work within the permitted uses to do improvements there as well, except for the expansion of the gas pumps.
Exactly.
Mr. Behringer, Mr. Delinger. Questions, comments?
No, just a comment for information to go to planning commission, but well, actually, I, I, I think we can vote on to go to planning commission tonight. That, that's fine. Before it goes to planning commission, those conditions need to be clearly delineated around the restrictions on that they had proposed. I know we talked a little bit in the hallway on how it's kind of complicated. And then it should not go to planning commission before there's more information provided to staff on the condition and the previous contamination, leak and contamination and what the situation is currently with the soil conditions there. Just so that they're in the know, we're in the know when it comes back to us. And I still have issues with the stormwater and it being the watershed, the drinking supply watershed and adding all that impervious surface, um, when the property already has a history of leaking stuff into the ground on top of whatever's coming off of, under the fuel, where the cars and fuel drips and all that other stuff. So those are my only comments. I just want planning commission to have some, more information than we have and we can keep it moving forward.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, with that being said, I think I'll, uh, close the public hearing, uh, but I will have a comment or two. This is kind of like a lot of projects that we hear from, including the, the two previous ones already. There's pros and cons, uh, and I certainly appreciate the applicant, uh, paying attention to, uh, some of the things that, that restricted uses. For example, the sidewalk improvement, the, the crosswalk, those are all good things. There's no question. These are very positive. Uh, my grandkids live around the corner from me. Uh, they walk to your store. Uh, sometimes they want to walk over to, uh, Avisburg Coffee, but they usually can't get across the street. I would say maybe we'd look at, uh, crosswalk going in that direction too. Again, that may be up to the town, up to the planning commission. There are pros and cons. Uh, many of the neighbors that I hear from are like the, the first five or so folks who spoke tonight, who just said, no fuel, please. It's just a different element of, of traffic moving about. We, we have a lot more fuel stations within this radius than we did when we were kids. You know, I'm, I'm not sure we really need another fuel station. I, I, I don't see that. Every, every project that comes before us here, whether it's residential or commercial, the question I always like for us to ask ourselves, is this the best we can do? Is, is fuel pumps the, the best use for this place? Don't want to, you know, tell an entrepreneur what he can or can't do to make money, but our job is to mediate that with the neighbors' requests and demands and respect their rights as well too. So there's, but both sides of this issue, just, just comments, just food for thought.
I'd say one thing I'll say.
Yes.
You talked about, you know, sitting there in the afternoon and seeing the traffic. My office is back there behind Garner Family Medicine. There's two buildings right there. I own one of those bays and so I know all about it. I get out, you know, I was coming here tonight and leaving there about five o'clock to go home and clean up and come up here. You know, I know what it's like to get out and turn left there. It's a challenge sometimes, uh, and it is sometimes it's worse than others. Sometimes you put it there and you look, oh my gosh, there's no traffic. And other times there'd be six, eight cars coming both ways. So it is, uh, uh, well traveled. And about 20 years ago, the speed limit when you came around the curb was 45. It would be 45 all the way down Buffalo. And we, we took, we had state that asked to change to 35 till they got to Timber. Then we did on the rest of Buffalo, but it used to be 45. You talk about barreling around the corner. It was really fast back then. So that's just giving you some, some history. And we also used to get gas up everywhere. Arby's was at Forest Hill 66, remember?
Yeah, yeah.
And that was a filling station, not a convenience store.
Again, lots of pros and cons. So, so thanks to everyone for your, your, uh, input, your, your feelings expressed here today, all very important. Uh, the question before the council here tonight is, uh, whether to refer this case onto the planning commission for more review, more detail, more input, another public hearing, uh, that everyone who's concerned should, uh, re, uh, appear at that one as well. So that being said, uh, is there a motion, uh, to refer this to the planning commission?
Um, I move that, uh, the, this case be referred to the planning commission for consistency and review and recommendation, uh, to be accompanied by the additional information requested.
Okay. Mr. Vance.
Requested by Mr. Delinger.
Mr. Delinger, yes.
Yes, okay. Uh, that was a motion by Mr. Vance to pass along with the information and the questions about, uh, the, the zoning, uh, and the former environmental issues that could be there. Okay, so there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Behringer. There's a, a motion and a second to refer this case to the planning commission for further review. Let's take a voice vote. All in favor of referring this, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Sounds like it's unanimous. Uh, decision is made to pass this along to the planning commission with the comments and questions that were developed here as night, tonight. So thank you for a good thorough evaluation of this. Thank you for your testimony. This is a step in the process. Uh, thank all of you who spoke tonight from, from the applicant, uh, and the neighbors, both for and against. Please express your feelings again, uh, at the planning commission, being, be on the lookout for that. Okay? So we will, we will move on now to item four, which is the tier one conditional rezoning request, uh, known as Gateway 540. And our presenter is Aaron Joseph, our assistant planning director. Uh, if you would give us the overview, please.
Yes, sir. I'll be happy to. All right. Thank you again. I will present this evening's, uh, rezoning case, CZ 24 002. This is a tier one condition rezoning case. It's also continued. Um, you first heard this case on September 3rd and it was continued to this date to, um, have the applicant, um, go back to the, um, the conditions and clarify some of those conditions and narrow, um, the list, uh, the, the table of permitted uses. And so I will go through that predominantly, what the changes are and just briefly summarize the, the, uh, parameters of the case. Again, this is a tier one. It was submitted by Beth Blackman of Timmons Group on behalf of the property owners, Forsyth Development and Investment, uh, Companies and Benson Road Land Company. Uh, the total acreage is, is approximately 97.15 acres. They are requesting, um, to rezone from Highway District and Residential 30, which is Wake County zoning districts, um, to light industrial conditional. Um, there is also an overlay district associated with this site. Um, it's limited access highway and it is within the Lower Swift Creek Conservation Overlay Districts. This site is located at 3530, 3540, uh, several parcels along Parish Farm Road and two along Benson Road and two along, uh, Cleveland School Road and one at, uh, Painters Road. And the zoning district, uh, current zoning district is Wake County's Highway District and Residential 30. These districts are intended for low density residential and the highway district does include low density residential as well as a, a wide range of non-residential uses, um, primarily approved through special use permitting. Currently the site is vacant. The site is surrounded by R 30 zoning on, on three sides and highway district, uh, to the northwest and south of the site. Uh, the new 540, um, is adjacent to the north side of the site. Uh, there are currently two mixed use development, uh, rezoning cases under review right now. They're within a one mile radius of the site. The, uh, site is located within a, uh, activity center. It's within the regional employment activity center. Um, the stretch of NC 50 or Benson Road is primarily two lanes. Um, and there are some improvements being constructed as part of the NC 540, uh, extension project. NC 50 is an arterial road that connects Garner, um, on the north end and south and through rural lands towards 1010 Road, which is within the community activity center and then further on to the future 540, uh, which is, um, a regional employment center. And then eventually on to NC 42. The, uh, latest traffic counts for this portion of Benson Road, based on data collected in 2023, is 17,544 average annual, uh, daily trips. And at Cleveland School Road, it has been, um, counted as 9,549 A A D T. Excuse me. Again, the, uh, request is, excuse me, is for light industrial conditional. Um, and since the public hearing on September 3rd, the applicant has reduced the number of possible uses to 32. Um, previously it was 36, um, out of a possible 41 uses in the L I district. They also have increased their proffered conditions from seven to 11. And I'll just go briefly go through what the, uh, new conditions that have been added to this tier one case. So they have included definitions and that's important to note because they have identified a commercial services pod as well as an employment pod. So that refers to the lands that are, um, located along 3530 Parish Road Drive, Parish Farm Road, 3540 Parish Farm, um, 3530 Parish. I won't go through all of that and just the, the properties along Parish, uh, Farm Road as well as Cleveland School Road and, um, Benson Road, uh, and, and 560 Painters Road. So talking about those properties, um, that are included in this rezoning. Now, the commercial service pods area, um, means that it refers to the area or the portion of the property depicted on the attached exhibit, and I'll get to that just in a second, just to show you specifically what this is. I want to take our time with this so that we truly understand what they are trying to, uh, convey here and condition, um, from the feedback from, from September 3rd. And so there also is that employment pod area. Um, and this is the property that is less the commercial services that again is attached to the, um, exhibit on the next slide here. You can, I would like you to see this before we get into the conditions. So you can understand that of these 95 acres or 97 acres, um, this area here has been deemed and defined in this golden color as the employment pod area. And then this area here that's fronting Benson Road and just hugs Cleveland School Road has been identified as that commercial pod area. I mean, that is important because certain uses will be prohibited within the commercial pod area and there will be limitations on the uses in the employment pod area. So starting at 600 feet setback is where you see this, um, commercial pod area starts and then it goes to, um, a 200 foot depth. Go back here to the, uh, new conditions that have been proffered that relate to these two identified areas of the site. So within that commercial services pod, there are some uses that have been prohibited. Um, all residential, all civic and institutional uses, um, some, um, indoor, or excuse me, outdoor athletic and entertainment facilities, industrial manufacturing warehousing utilities, um, and agricultural miscellaneous uses have been prohibited in that 200 foot frontage commercial services pod area. And as we speak to the employment pod area, there is a condition that, uh, for a period of 10 years, um, following the effective date of this rezoning, um, that there will be no more than 25% of the gross land area shall be used for flex space. Flex space is any use within a structure or building may have multiple uses that are So that just speaks to that maximum amount of flex space within the employment pod area. Again, just going back to this, uh, illustration here, give you an idea. One thing I'd like to note is that uses within the commercial pod area, they can extend a bit into that employment pod area. However, uses within the employment pod area cannot extend into the, uh, commercial pod area. Again, the commercial pod area only allows for uses that are commercial, office, retail, service, um, overnight accommodation, those type of uses are what we are aiming, what the applicant is aiming for in that commercial pod delineated area of the site. I won't go through all of these, um, conditions. These are the conditions that were originally proffered and they have not changed since, uh, September 3rd. Just to refresh that this site is located within, uh, one of our, um, focus areas in the Garner Forwards Plan. It's the NC, uh, five, NC 540 at NC 50. Um, you'll see on the screen and the image highlighted and outlined where, um, subarea one is located. That this area has been identified for, as a mix of employment uses organized around Life Science Center campus. Has been identified that this would be a strong logistics location. shows a commercial development that is locally serving, um, and is geared towards the traveling public passing through this area and will be a key, uh, entry point into Johnston County in the near future. So it is believed and staff does believe that the choice of the zoning district of L I and the permitted uses are supportive of the recommendations regarding the subarea one from. from our Garner Forward Plan. And we always believe that with some further attention to the consistency analysis tool from input from staff and from the public, that it can be fine-tuned even further. These scores that you currently have before you have not been updated, but we will update them to reflect the additional conditions and permitted uses, and will be reviewed, re-reviewed prior to the Planning Commission. So just wanted to keep that in mind for you all, that we will reevaluate that consistency. And as we've done this evening, we would like to highlight the next steps, finish and close the public hearing, potentially refer to the Planning Commission for findings of consistency, and then ultimately back before Town Council for findings of reasonableness in a decision to approve or deny this rezoning case. The applicant is here this evening and available to answer any questions you may have, and staff is also available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Does the applicant wish to make a presentation?
Yeah, good evening again, Mayor, members of council, Jason Behrman with Morningstar. Really appreciate the opportunity to sit down, based on the feedback that we received back on September third. Sat down with staff as well as councilors Matthews and Dillinger. Really appreciate the feedback that we got in each of those instances. And it was really informative to our team, just in terms of understanding kind of what the council's expectations are, what the direction was, and there were a couple of themes that emerged out of that, those conversations. One was that the area along Benson Road and at the intersection with Cleveland School Road is an area where we want to see commercial services, that those employment-type uses don't necessarily need to be up against that road frontage. Additionally, it was clear that you don't want this to be a single-use site. And so that's why we've put in that condition, limiting the amount of flex space to twenty-five percent of the employment pod for ten years. We've also further refined our permitted uses and got rid of some other things that we probably could have done before September third, like funeral home and vehicle repair and sales and things along those lines. So that, those meetings, that meeting that we had here at Town Hall was really, really informative for us, and I think we're optimistic. What is before you tonight does a better job of kind of explaining the expectation and explaining the purpose of this particular rezoning. And so with that, here to answer any questions that you all may have and look forward to continuing to work on this case as we make our way through the process.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I will ask council members if they have questions for the applicant or staff. Let's start at this end. Not this time. I do not.
I have a question for staff and a correction. You said twenty-five percent of the employment pod, and it's actually twenty-five percent of the gross land area is what's mentioned in the condition. So I just want to make sure that, correct your statement.
Fair enough. That's fair.
And I have a question for staff because the condition to be, or it's time of the commercial services pod, the description in the condition doesn't match the exhibit. Condition says the frontage of Benson Road. Exhibit shows six hundred feet Benson Road, Cleveland School Road. So which one is right?
So are you referring to, I want to make sure I understand the question. Are you referring to this six hundred foot from the property line?
Yeah, so the, yeah, the definition describes the commercial pod consisting of an area measuring two hundred feet deep going along the entire Benson Road frontage of the property. But that's not what's depicted here because there's also frontage on Cleveland School, so which one is correct?
So I believe that that was a discrepancy that needs to go back and to be changed, that they can slide this over further since the, the condition is for the entire frontage. So they, that is something that should be clarified and revised to reflect that you want the entire Benson Road for that employment area.
Exhibit should match the condition.
Yeah, and so the exhibit is the intent. We finalized the condition, and then we received a request from staff to slide that down six hundred feet, and we just didn't update the condition. We updated the exhibit, so we will make sure that those two speak to each other. Completely agree with that.
I'm not really concerned with which one comes to us.
Yeah, just needs to be consistent.
But there can't be two because then I don't know what I'm talking about.
Yes.
I don't know what I'm arguing.
We will correct that.
The other question I have for the applicant is, what, you have this two hundred feet of frontage. What is envisioned to go in this two hundred feet of frontage?
I mean, again, we don't have any specific plans per se as of right now. The idea, based on the conversation that we had, was to prevent the true employment uses from creeping up along Benson Road. And so the idea behind this minimum two hundred-foot depth, and as staff noted, and this exhibit does a great job of pointing out, that commercial services pod can move into the employment area. The employment area can't move into that commercial services pod. So to answer your question, Mr. Dillinger, we don't have any specific plans for that other than identifying the uses that could go in there and those that can't go in there.
So what can fit in two hundred feet of frontage?
So two hundred foot, two hundred feet of frontage is what I would consider a typical out parcel. But again, recognizing that that's just the minimum amount, that can creep in, you know, four hundred, six hundred, whatever that number ends up being, we wanted to maintain flexibility, to be responsive, but also to ensure that those employment uses weren't going to be stacked up to Benson Road in a way that would prohibit commercial services from developing along that portion of the site.
So if the employment portion pushed up to the two hundred feet, it would stop and couldn't go further?
Theoretically, yes.
I remember the meeting we had, and Mr. Trezenberg had said that three hundred feet was more typical. And so I took to Google Earth and did more research. The parcels in front of Costco on four oh one, the Chick-fil-A, Walgreens, and Starbucks are two hundred and thirty to two hundred and fifty feet. The Autozone across the street on four oh one is three hundred feet. Seven-Eleven gas station is three hundred feet. At Wydok, the Chick-fil-A is three hundred feet, the Chili's is three hundred feet, Red Robin's three hundred feet. True Hotel, which is again a hotel use, is listed in it, is four hundred fifty by three forty. My point is, and the other examples, you can't do anything in two hundred feet of frontage.
Yeah, and so again, the idea here is to ensure that the pod can move back, but it can't, the employment pod can't move up. But I think we, but I think we're fine with having a discussion associated with what that appropriate depth is.
If it goes to the two hundred feet, it's useless.
Right, and it would not be in the best interest of the landowner and developer to render that portion of the site useless, if that makes sense.
But it wouldn't achieve what we need to achieve on any of the permitted uses in the employment pod is, for some reason, goes up to the two hundred feet, and you can more fit more flex space or warehouses. And we don't want to do that other stuff. That's dead space now.
Yeah, and that's not in my client's best interest and certainly not the plan. Again, we can talk about what the appropriate depth is, and are happy to continue that conversation.
I've got a couple of other questions, but I'll pass along.
Okay, Ms. Behringer, comments, questions, Mr. Singleton?
Okay, so the condition, under being in a definition, does not match what you just said about the commercial pod. It clearly says in here, "commercial pod consisting of an area two hundred feet deep." It doesn't say a minimum of two hundred feet deep. It doesn't say minimum two hundred and can go up to another hundred and make it three hundred. It says in the condition, "you can't get two hundred feet." It doesn't say you can expand.
What it says is, "the employment can't creep into that two hundred feet." The commercial services aren't required to be located exclusively in that district. Commercial services are actually permitted throughout the entirety of the site. What we've done is create a buffer where the employment can't creep into that area, which is why it says two hundred feet. But again, if you want tighter language to make that more clear, I'm happy to do that.
Because it says it won't be any more than two hundred feet, but you can expand it. So I mean, this contradicts itself. Minimum, I mean, it's two hundred feet, but we can expand it. It doesn't say that. We've gotten called on conditions before. That's why I'm being anal about this.
No, that's fine. Yeah.
We've had this come up before, and so I'm just making sure.
I wanted to be right as well, for sure.
That the commercial can expand another hundred feet or whatever you and Mr. Trezenberg just decide, but that's having in writing so we understand that because we've been burned before.
That's fair. We can definitely find you that.
Being, not being specific enough.
Yep, that's fair.
Thank you.
Most of the questions have been asked, but I'd like to make a comment if I could. I had the pleasure of being in that meeting along with Mr. Dillinger, and it was good conversation all the way around, and economic development played big into that meeting, which we hadn't talked a whole lot about that tonight. But it was mentioned, maybe where the six hundred, there's going to be a hotel somewhere around that major intersection. It could have been a hampton or something wide in that, what we're just talking about here, or what else. But we had the county in here not too many weeks before, talking about economic development, and it was made, but we just don't have properties. Hello. And I think I may have mentioned that the other day, too, at that meeting. We do have potentially properties here to, for those people to come in and bring in jobs and really grow that area like we want it to. Plus, it's got a luxury, a five forty right next door to it, which makes it even more valuable for transportation, everything else, especially on the commercial side, getting in and out. So, so having said that, this is a great opportunity, and I think everything's been brought up here, not like Greg mentioned, that more than two hundred, three hundred, whatever that magic number is. Let's make sure we get it in there so it's understandable. But the county is looking at this big time, and I think we've got a great opportunity here. And I still want to see it slip through our hands over a technicality or something like that. When we, we know what they are, from what I'm hearing tonight, we can fix everything that needs to be fixed and move this project forward. So I think it's a great opportunity for us, the county, and people living in that area. And of course, raw luck comes in. We know water sewer is going to be attached in there, too. That's the magic word right there. So we, it's a win-win, in my opinion. That's just my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. You had another question or two?
Yeah, just a little frustrated, the inconsistencies that are being presented tonight because they're inconsistent and they don't lack, they lack clarity. And even, you know, the comment, the wording is a little ambiguous on even the flex space usage to ten years because then it says, it's within the employment pod, no more than twenty-five percent of the gross land area could be used for a flex space. Now, that could be interpreted two ways, where it's twenty-five percent of the pod or twenty-five percent of the gross land area, but it has to be within the employment pod area. So there's some polishing of language, also not really clear on why there's the ten years in there. And also, I know we talked about maximizing flexibility, but that was mostly making sure that we were creating a viable commercial frontage and so that it could really have that maximum flexibility on the backend. The interjection of the flex space limitations gives me a little concern because, well, maybe you could do all warehousing, and then we're left with this two hundred frontage that doesn't ever develop into anything substantive. So I think there's some polishing of the language to, again, achieve what you all need to achieve, to have a parcel that is competitive, but also provides the sort of commercial opportunities that we want to leave available. And so I think we're close, but there's just some more polish. And I think we can do what we need to do tonight, go to Plan and Commission, polish it between the time it goes there. But I'm, as I'm a little disappointed, there's some of these discrepancies in what's being presented.
Okay, yes, Mr. Singleton.
And getting on with the ten years. You know, if this gets approved, eight to twelve months to get permits, get our utilities, this is going to take two to three years before we see anything out there of a structure. So basically, you're using two to three years instead of ten years. It's just from the rezoning. It should be from the issuance of the first CO to the first building because you're cutting the life of the ten years by what you've got to do with infrastructure and construction. So it's one of those opinions, if we're going to get ten, want to get ten years, and that'd be twenty-five percent five, let's make it ten years, not ten years from the zoning, less construction, and it'd be seven years. However, that language can be, I mean, ten years, and let's make it ten years, not ten years from the rezoning.
Lots of important questions. Did we ask about other speakers? We've heard everyone else.
We do have some, some public members who have signed up to speak.
How many?
Two, at least.
Okay, let's hear from the two members of the public who have signed up. The first one would be?
Claudia Hepburn.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Claudia Hepburn. I reside at one zero zero four Rico Road in Garner, just outside that map. I could walk here from my property. So the meeting two weeks ago, the citizens that are affected by this change are not actually Town of Garner citizens. They're Wake County citizens. So as that, I don't really have a say in who gets to sit up here, who's mayor, and who's making all these decisions about the land that's right next to my house. I'd like to thank you for listening to me, a Wake County taxpayer, but not a person from the Town of Garner. At the last meeting, we heard that the board was, that from the board, you all, that the intentions of changes in zoning are for the benefit of the citizens of Garner. We heard the Timmons group state it would be of economic benefit to the citizens, and clearly, that's what's on the economic plan. But since we don't know what businesses are going in or how many jobs are going to be provided, and in addition, what was talked about at the February meeting with the homeowners is that really, this isn't ninety-seven acres with the setbacks and the streams that are on here with the setbacks, and the streams will only be about seventy percent of that could be developed of those ninety-seven acres. That is not as many jobs as there is if there's ninety-seven acres. So it's a little less than what is being presented. How many jobs this would be, we can't really know. And while you might make the decision that this will provide more jobs, we won't really know about that. Would that increase in economic benefit actually improve the life of the people who live in Garner? I don't think so. The type of businesses found in light industrial could include all the things we've mentioned tonight, food, gas stations, things that are of use at an exchange with the highway. We do have plenty of those around. As well as, I'd like to address the traffic. I know that you guys look at the data of the amount of cars annually, per day, that whatever that statistic is, but I don't really have access to that. So what I did is go onto Google Maps and look at the timing it takes to get from Cleveland School Road to Timber Drive. During the day, non-rush hour times, it's seven minutes to go those four point eight miles. At the hours of seven AM or five PM, depending on whether you're going north or south, that time currently is increased to eighteen minutes. That's on a good day. That's on an average day, not without rain, tornadoes, and accidents. But while we are looking at 2023 data that you guys are investigating for the amount of cars, that doesn't take into account the fact that the VA facility is opening on fifty and the amount of traffic that the VA facility is going to put up and down Route fifty. We'll have a great increase in traffic from that, as well as the developments that are going in just off of fifty behind the Stevens Road. We haven't discussed any of the traffic implications of the VA system going in there. That hasn't been talked about in terms of the impact of traffic on Route fifty. In looking at whether this would be a benefit to the citizens of Garner and the citizens of Wake County who live around there, I don't see it being a positive impact. I see it being a negative impact. And a better solution for me would be to leave it as vacant space, green space, a park, whatever it could be that looks a little bit better than having a commercial thing sitting at the corner. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your input. Next speaker?
Susan Biggerstaff.
Okay, thank you.
And then I believe Mr. Brennan is with the applicant's team. Is that correct? So that will conclude the public speakers for tonight.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for your input. Again, just to mention the difference between the Tier One condition rezoning versus the Tier Two, this is a good comparison to the project we just looked at, Bethel Green, where we could see every lot, almost every house, every mail kiosk, every sidewalk, every path, every connector. This, that's what we're used to seeing. This is different. This is a little more open-ended. It's a little more scary. It's a little more challenging. But what we understand, the type of large employer, you can call them Apple, you could call them Eli Lilly, you could call any of the big name guys, that would be a real asset in terms of jobs with a real asset in terms of jobs, with, with a limited amount of traffic compared to the amount of economic impact to the families around. Though, we understand that those folks need to see that it is actually zoned into something they could use before they will even look at it in detail. So it's the chicken and egg, which comes first. Do you zone it and, and trust the developers and, and the big employers to make good decisions? We do have some other opportunities, this council does have other opportunities in the future to look at special use permits and other limiting things that we can do some. But it is, it is a little scary, it is a little different. And you mix that in with all the change that's going on in Wake County, it's stressful, it's stressful. Is there gonna be more traffic? As I mentioned before, if the town of Garner never does another rezoning, if we never issue another building permit for anything, we're still gonna be overwhelmed by the traffic from our neighbors. We, we have to do something, we have to do something to control it, we have to do something that will be to the better instead of the worse, as we see other municipalities who have not done the planning and let it run kind of helter-skelter. We're trying to make some consistent decisions, but it's, it's a challenge. I sympathize with all of us involved. So that being said, I think we're gonna close the public hearing here and ask if there's a motion, and our, our question is to, to refer to the.
Before we close the public hearing, because the implications of that are automatically sent to the planning commission, I'm not sure we're clear on what we're sending to the planning commission.
Well, I guess what we would be sending to planning commission is just like we did on the last one, where here's the, the information that's been presented by the applicant, here's the information presented by the staff, and here's the comments and questions that this council had at this point, and let the planning commission grind through it again before it comes back here again. Again, this is not a decision to approve it or not approve it, our decision is to take the next step in the valuation process, unless we have, unless we want to make a motion to delay this again, postpone this again with some very specific questions that we have in mind.
Well, I, I'm, I'm just saying, we've got two, two issues with this one as they stand. One is the exhibit, does it match the condition? And nobody's stepped up to say which one is the right. And the other is this 200 feet issue, is it gonna be 300, is it gonna be 200, what is the? And then we're not gonna see what goes to planning commission for them to evaluate before they get it. So how do we, how does planning commission know that's what county, what the council wants them to evaluate?
That becomes part of the, the transfer information that we put on the file. Help, help me out here.
We're letting them decide?
Let, let me call on, on our town manager, our town attorney, our, our planning director. How does this information, how does these questions, how does these concerns get relayed to the planning commission so that they can address these as, as they get ready to send it back to this council for a final decision?
So first, I would offer that, I believe if the client feels the same, the exhibit is the correct, we need to get the verbal, make sure that the verbal matches the exhibit. The second thing, we would frame as a question of what is the appropriate cutoff between the two pods to make everybody feel comfortable. And I think the feedback we would give is that there was some concern and pause about it being 200 feet, and whether or not that should actually be larger, and for them to consider that.
So the comment, this is why this is important, because if the exhibit is what we're sending, then my comments are very different. Because if you look at this pink area, one, it's only 200 feet, I've already demonstrated, you can't fit anything commercial on that 200 feet. The other is, you've got this massive utility easement coming through there to bifurcate it and further impede what commercial opportunities could go there. Also, in the conditions, it's not Cleveland School Road, and there's some other kind of easement or something here that is reducing the size of that, too. So, and if that ever gets, intersection ever gets improved, I'm sure it'll eat up, I, I don't know, but that's why it's important, because if it goes like this, if the whole other rest of the project is taken up with the other things they want to do, there's not anything viably commercial you can put on that property. And if someone, if the applicant would like to suggest something that could possibly go there, that is in accordance with our UDO, with the setbacks that are required, and the stormwater retention that's gonna be required, I'm all ears, but it becomes a useless piece of property for the purposes that we originally delayed the public hearing for in the first place, which was to create another alternative for the use of this space that wouldn't all be warehousing and flex space. So that's why it's important for us to know what we're sending to planning commission, because the list of concerns are different.
Yeah. So what I can offer right now is that the exhibit is what we are sending, with revised language to match.
All right, can I ask this question, then? Can we see that next week at the work session? So we know what's going to planning commission? The work session, I believe, is on Thursday next week, is that correct?
Yes, we could actually look at that information and send it out ahead of the work session as well. So I think the revisions to make sure that the exhibit and the conditions language are aligned, we could actually send out to council ahead of next week's work session.
So how does that relate to taking a vote tonight?
The, the action before council this evening is what, to refer the, the request to the planning commission for review and recommendation for consistency. Part of that could be based on the condition that the information that's provided as part of the exhibit be aligned with the language that's included for the conditions as well. And then, as Mr. Trezenberg mentioned also, there seems to be concern regarding the 200 feet and whether that's an appropriate amount for any viable commercial. So looking at having the planning commission look at that particular number and provide some feedback and guidance to council on whether or not 200 feet's appropriate or should be higher.
Well, I think that should be addressed before we go to planning commission. That should, that should come from us to get a planning commission. We've already said we don't think it's enough, but we'd like a cap on it. So that, to me, that, that's what we need to see. I don't want to send the planning commission about the 200 feet, we almost all up here agree that. It may need to be deeper. Mr. Dellinger has done some, some work at other out parcels, and again, the, the utility easements takes a chunk out of the middle. So if you know 200 is a minimum, and Mr. Trezenberg suggested 300, then why don't we consider 300 and put it in the language, up to 300?
Let's, let's talk about how it came to the 200 feet.
Okay, if, if you would, step over to the microphone, and if you would introduce yourself.
My name's Gordon Poulson, 414 Foreside Street, Raleigh. Let's talk about how it came to that 200 feet. Is that, we tried to accommodate, all this stuff was being asked, well, what happens when you start these setbacks and you start, all the, the natural things are on this property between the blue line streams, the easements, the, the gas line, everything else? Is what happens when you get all done, you carve it all up, you got no room for your employment center. So we thought, based on the meeting that we were at, that we said, well, we thought a good, a good solution was, is that, yeah, we'll put the, we'll put the commercial uses along the front, and they go back as deep as they, as they need to go, and we'll stop from any encroachment from, from getting close to the, to the main roads. But if you, if you keep moving that line back, you keep doing all the other stuff, you got no room to put your buildings, make employment centers. So we're not trying to, to short anybody, we're trying to come to a great solution that works for everybody, is what we're trying to do. And, and, you know, this, this property isn't exactly flat. So, you know, there has to be a lot of work around here, and, and the reason, when up here, Jeff asked us, after we had that meeting, would you come back and would you consider adding the, the, the frontage along Cleveland School Road? So that's how that 600 feet additional, although it's more than 600 feet, came along Cleveland School Road. So we tried to accommodate all this. The other thing that has to happen, when you put this 200 feet or 300 feet, there's gotta be a back road that goes there, so you can get to that property. And we only have two driveways to this property. One is off Benson Road, the other one off Cleveland School Road. So when you get all done, there's only so many out parcels you can get. And, you know, the whole thing's gotta work together. So it isn't like somebody's trying to put something over on anybody else, we're trying to make the whole thing work and still accomplish an employment center, which is on the Garner Forward Plan. That's been working diligently for a couple of years here. So all I take is, take that consideration, but I don't think it's fair to shack our hands so we can't get anything done. I don't think that's reasonable. We've been, we've tried to be reasonable all the way through here.
We're trying to do the opposite of that, because if the commercial pod can expand, shouldn't there be a cap on it? If you're trying to keep the employment center big? I mean, if you're gonna put a hotel there, we know good and well, 200 feet depth, that's not gonna work unless you're gonna have a.
Well, there, there are some things that, that we can't put here, because we're trying to limit it, so that, that what we thought you wanted along here is commercial uses, like whether a bank or a fast food restaurant, or a restaurant or something like that. That's what we thought. If they need to go back, it, it can slide back into, into the, into the employment center, but it can't go the other way.
I understand that, but again, what's the, you're going back 400 feet, if I just used the word hotel came up, then you're going back further. I just, you'd think there would be a cap and say you can't go any further.
Well, my bigger concern is in the conversation that we had, your primary focus, as it should be, is on the employment center. So it's always gonna have, take precedence over the later development of any commercial. So if you've gotta sacrifice the commercial to get the larger employment center, that, that's what you would do, and that would be probably the right business decision, but it undermines what we've tried to accomplish over the past few weeks into getting some set asides, because 200 feet is not enough for fast food restaurants, it's not, it's not enough room for any commercial in Garner. And that's why when Mr. Trezenberg said the 300 feet in the meeting, he did it for a reason, that's because that's what, almost all the modern art out parcels in Garner are, that's their depth.
I think that some of the other stuff, I've done a bunch of commercial development. So I think this, this stuff that you referred to is that if you want a frontage road that goes in front, that you can go back and forth between them, if you want a back road, you want setbacks, you can do all of those things. However, there's a, when you take a look at the spaces that goes around some of those centers, you know, the, the, the size of the, you're trying to accommodate a specific use on those out parcels, that's, that's all we're saying, and we're saying, you know, if you want to limit how much they can go far, then you can. That's all I'm saying, is that there's, you know.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I don't even like that kind of development, I don't even want the, those art parcels used that way. But even if they were able, even if somebody wanted them to, 200 feet is not enough. Even if you did some kind of vertical stack parking, something or whatever, anything you want to do on 200 feet, it's not gonna fit. The only thing that fits on 200 foot wide that I've found in Garner are strip office parks, like along Timber Drive. That, that's not the level of, of, of commercial that is sort of in, useful to the citizens in the future for shopping or doing anything. So I, I said, we sat in the meeting, and I appreciate the effort, but this exhibit creates an unusable set aside. You can see the easement, the contour lines, they're, it, it, I'm, I'm, I'm an open book, and somebody tell me what can go there. If it were just built to that pink as all that's left.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I think we're divided by a common language here, in the words of Weston Churchill, that I think the wording, we're saying what we want to say, and I'm hearing it, I understand what my colleagues are saying at the same time, but if we said, it's a 200 minimum, but worded where they, those individual lots can be expanded to accommodate whatever business is going in there, worded in that, in that respect, is that something workable, is what I'm saying?
That's what we're saying here, that's.
That's what I think you're saying, and.
That's what we're saying here, and, and what I hear Mr. Singleton saying is, well, how far back can you go? What's the maximum? You're not saying that?
No, no, put a cap on it, see, you can't give it so far, and then you know how much square feet you have in the employment pod. It goes to 300, and that's it. It don't matter what you're building on there, if it won't fit to 300, you can't do it. That's what I'm saying, is you cap it, and then you know what you've got left with the employment pod. There's no ifs, ands, or buts, there's no, we're gonna move at 40 feet here and 75 feet on this one. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, so let me ask you this, then, if you're saying this 200 feet is okay, as long as you cap it at 300, you're okay with that?
That would be better, yes and yes, because that way you cannot expand any further, and then that way you know it could go to 300, and you know what you got left with the employment pod.
That's fine, I'll do that.
Does that address your concern, Mr. Dellinger?
That makes sense to me.
The, in, the position of this right now has so many encumbrances on it, you move that 300 feet back on the Lake Ben, on the Benson side, you're running to utility easement. What does that get you? Nothing, it gets you nothing, but unbuildable land. So it, it's the viability of the remaining commercial spot. That is the goal, that you have viable land to do something commercial on.
Well, one of the problems you run into by expanding it to a hard 300 or a hard 400 is if you look down to that corner where that power line easement goes through there, and where the road's gonna come in there, you end up with, with several different triangles right there, and what happens, you end up with, with several acres that are unusable. But if you do what Mr. Singleton just suggested, 200 feet with a 300 foot cap, then I think that we can make that work.
And be flexible.
That, that's, that's the, that's the part, the flexibility. So the 600 feet, where did 600 feet come from? Because that seems to be, and this is, there's the other issue of acreage, so maybe there's another way to, an acreage configured, because, again, if, if, Jeff's gonna say something.
Yeah, yeah, let me, let me shed a little, let me shed a little light on.
Let, let's see if, let's, let's see if our planning director can be the interpreter and translator here that we need. As Mr. Matthews said, we're all speaking toward a common goal, but we're hung up over this or that. Mr. Trezenberg, your suggestion, sir?
Yes, so a, a little bit of the conversations that, that you are, have not been privy to, that kind of got into these, some of these last, you know, again, we were on a compressed time. But when we first received the, the exhibit that they proposed, what, what you had was this 200 feet, but it was from this property line, and then it stopped at the corner. When we looked at the comprehensive plan and the exhibit that was drawn, staff felt that the, again, the intent is that for kind of the industrial employment to give way to some commercial and eventually give way as you move down Cleveland School Road to residential. So the fact that we had the commercial completely pulled up here to the interchange and not in this area along Cleveland School Road seemed to be opposite to what the plan called for. So what we literally did is we measured from the corner of the intersection to this property line, and it was roughly 600 feet. So we asked them to basically take what they were showing and slide it over to the other side, and then we put a dimension on this just so that we could quantify it for zoning purposes, because we always have to reference a known line, so that we can actually measure it in the future.
I believe at the end of the day, one of the things we've learned is that what carries over in zoning conditions are the words and the numbers, not the pictures. What are the words that, that we can put here that will alleviate the concern that we hear two council members talk about here?
So.
Hang on just a second, let me, let me restate that again. What words could, could we write on here that as we pass this off to the planning commission, will allay some of the concerns that some council members have, and still give the developer the flexibility to put the maximum employment pod in there, depending on, and maybe there's no commercial down at that end, maybe there's no commercial down here, maybe it's all 300 feet and one lump in the middle. I don't know, because I think what I'm hearing is that.
Singleton said is, if he, if, if it's 200 feet, maximum 300, would have the language, whatever the language it needs to be, that's an intent. I think we're good with that, and.
All right, just a comment, and, and I think, I hear this a lot, the comprehensive plan is a recommendation, it's a suggestion, right? And tell me if I'm incorrect, seems the original configuration makes more sense, because you have a contiguous commercial area, and it seems to create a larger contiguous employment pod on the southeast part of the property, so you don't have this buffer of weird commercial. It just seems the other configuration. It just seems the other configuration makes more sense, that it is just Benson Road with this 300 feet. And it, it just increases the size of the employment on the other side. Am I?
And again, when, when we looked at it, we looked at it as more of, again, trying to think of in the future, if, if this commercial, because we don't know what it is, you hear the applicant, we talk a lot about out parcels, but maybe that's not the type of commercial we really want. If we really want something that is not as auto-driven, then we want to be make sure, making sure that that's in closer proximity to folks who don't, wouldn't have to take an auto there potentially in the future. So that's, again, that's the reasoning as to why we suggested that they slide it. Just being that Cleveland School also is the less trafficked road. And just thinking futuristically, as this area takes, takes shape, it would be a little bit odd to have a commercial space separated by employment and then residential.
I understand the logic there, but also looking at the topography, you've shifted the commercial into a more encumbered part of the parcel.
Right.
And, and so you may end up using, it's less usable for that, for the purpose.
Yeah. But there again, we kept in mind too, that, that 200 feet was not the limit, that you could go further back. And so that is still, I think, just something that we as staff would wanna caution you on. That's the whole reason we didn't propose a maximum. Because if you, if you do and it's the wrong maximum, you're going to pigeonhole yourself into a certain type of commercial. So we took away from that meeting that the flexibility was the more important thing. So that something could go back further, but then other things might not. It would allow them the flexibility to work with the topo and work with the constraints in a way that wouldn't be as cumbersome. So again, that's just kind of our approach and keeping in mind how we're going to be in, be able to enforce this down the road and apply it.
I think part of our confusion here is we're trying to give enough flexibility to get the result we want, but we don't want unlimited flexibility. We're, we're afraid to turn loose of the pin. But we want to, to give these developers enough flexibility to get the kind of project that we all want. So what are the magic words that will satisfy the people, the council members who don't wanna give too much leeway, but still let these guys do what they need to do to make it work with the goal in mind of being a, a great employment center? What, what are the words? What are the limits?
One of the things that I think we could entertain perhaps is a cap on the just overall area that could be commercial. It wouldn't set a hard line, but we could cap the overall area at the end of the day so that, you know, maybe it needs to go further back in one spot, but not as, as far back in the other. But if they don't exceed a certain overall percentage, it still gives them the flexibility to design it as the designs come forward, but it still would entertain or allow for the majority, the vast majority of the site to be employment.
Okay. Does that sound vaguely suitable to you guys?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, do we have to close this meeting and delay this again and go through this discussion again? Or is there something that can be done to, to keep, to keep this on track, on schedule? Time is money to these guys.
Yeah.
Well, if we can get this in writing, we can vote on the next week at the work session. You can't, we can't do that, but you can.
Yeah.
I don't think we can, I don't think we can vote in the work session.
It's a meeting. It's a publicly advertised meeting.
You can suspend the rules and, and take a vote at a work session if, if council needs to.
Okay.
Yes, you can. Been doing this a long time, Mayor. You can take a vote in the work session.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a public hearing, but a public meeting.
Exactly. It's advertised though, and if we continue this until September 28th, a Thursday?
If you continue the public hearing, it would be a public hearing and, and you would have to allow for public comment.
Okay.
And that would be the 26th of September.
26th, I'm sorry. Thank you. That's Thursday next week, right?
Yes.
Okay. I had no trouble doing that. That way we see it, the staff said they could get, would get it before the meeting so we would see it. We'd know what it is. If we're all set aside, then we basically should sit down and it should be a pretty short discussion. But I think we need to see it in writing because we're sitting here, we're in the same neighborhood and we're on the same street, but it's not in the same house. You know, and talking about things. So we're close. Yes. What Mr. Trezenberg suggested, flexibility. That way if one needs to go back 350 and one on the 212 or whatever, using the space. That's reasonable to me and I understand why he explained why he went to the Cleveland School because it's, it's softer up front than the employment pod when you're that close to residential. It all makes logical sense though. I'm fine with that. Do you want to make a motion?
Please.
Well, can I say something as well? Just wanna add that, I've been listening to the discussion and we all know that this is one of the major areas that's been recommended for, for future development by, by our plan and also by Wake, Wake County's observation as well. So understanding this is a large area and this is a large tier one as well, as we go through this, this process and allowing flexibility for the developer to get what we would like to have here. And I don't think that is, I think, as Mr. Singleton said, I think we're closer than, than what we think we are. It's just getting the, getting the wording, the verbiage and everything correct and just fine tuning a few things so we can move it a little further. So I don't have a problem with continuing on with the staff, hearing what's been, what's been said and providing what is the necessary, necessary verbiage so that we can move this on to the next step and that is to the planning commission. So I'm fine with what's being recommended. I'm, I'm clear from, from those one council person's point of view.
Okay. I'm seeing some heads nodding up here. All the heads nodding or shaking over here.
We believe we're very, 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 very. The language and the, they're very specific. The little details, we're not in, we thought we were following directions, so that's why we got, and we're not arguing.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Again, I agree. I think we're all that close. This is a little bit new territory for us with the tier one. We're in some ways, it's, it's a blank check and we trust you guys a lot and thank a lot of your, your ability to make a good project. Our worst nightmare, of course, is that somehow we make a decision and then somehow somebody else is, got that blank check. So if, if we can spend a week and get this resolved a week from tonight, that still keeps you back on getting to the planning commission on your original time. If this will add to building consensus and teamwork, I, I kinda go along with what I seem to be hearing from most of us. And as long as our attorney and our town manager and our planning director says this is practical and legal to, to put this off till next week and then run through it again in, in a more streamlined fashion than we have the last, this time and previous time, then maybe this is the way to move forward.
Can I make a quick comment, Mr. Mayor?
Let, let's, let's hear one more.
Just as the council is considering the potentially continuing this public hearing to the work session, I just wanted to make you aware that unfortunately, Mr. Trezenberg will not be with us during the work session, so we will not have his expertise here with us at the work session to answer any final questions. So if that's a concern of the council, then you might consider moving it to the first meeting in October.
I will make the offer though, to be available virtually.
Okay. And that, that's very kind of you. Thank you.
Jeff, could, could, could the first meeting October still make the planning commission packet if that was preferred by council?
You have less than a week between those two meetings.
That would be very tough.
I think it's better, we would try to tackle it at the work session. And then if there's even a little bit of polish that needs to go into the first meeting so that it can go to planning commission, that's probably better to try to tackle at the work session. And your gracious offer to help is, appreciate it. I don't know where you were supposed to be, but.
Well, Aaron, Aaron and I are actually both out of town, but it will be, I, I have the capability to, to participate virtually. I'm more than happy to do that.
So am I hearing that we can't get this done by next Thursday?
Yeah.
Not, not to complicate your decision-making process, but it, it might be more appropriate to do it on the first when you're having training. The only problem is we were gonna do the training upstairs in the training room.
Okay. So would that still get this to the planning commission on the original schedule?
I mean, we're just talking about some language. To be sure, we can have this worked out by Thursday.
That's what I'm thinking.
I'm thinking, why aren't we going to the first? I mean, we've kinda explained, it's just tweaking some language. That's, that's, if we can't, if we screw it up next Thursday, then we'll move it to the first. I move, I move that we've continued, continue the public hearing?
Yes. The motion would be to continue the public hearing to a specific date and time.
Move that we continue this public hearing until Thursday, September 26th at the 6:00 PM work session meeting. Is that correct, Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Is that close enough?
I would second that.
There's a motion by Mr. Singleton and a second by Mr. Matthews to close this and continue it on the 26th. And we hope to have the right language before us, even before then, as reviewed by the developers and by the council members, so that we can make a decision in a more streamlined way at that time to keep it on track with the planning commission's schedule. Do you understand, anybody have any question about the motion that's been made? Okay. If there's no question about the motion being made, I'm gonna call for a voice vote on that motion without rephrasing it. All those in favor of passing this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by nay. Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you for working with us. Thank you for your patience. Thanks for the patience of the citizens. I know this is not getting closer to your goal necessarily. But the more we look at it, the more we can get this going in the right direction, the better we can feel that the best decision is being made. So that closes the, the hearing and the vote on that tier one gateway 540. We'll now move along to new and old business. Anyone who doesn't need to stay, I understand.
While they're excellent, can I make a comment? Nothing to do with changing anything. You know, this is a big development and we're gonna see a lot more coming our way with the 540 all the way down to Old Stage Road. This, it's no telling what's gonna come our way and we need to make sure, let's get it right with these guys. That way we don't have to relive this with every major thing. The county's watching us and there's people on TV watching us. Developers wanna come with similar projects, so who knows what. Could be a big manufacturing complex, who knows? And so we, so I just wanna make sure we get this thing right so we don't have to relive this over and over. So lessons learned, let's take good lessons from it. And how can we make it smoother next time and not reinvent wheel? Because we don't need to relive this over and over and over. Because the, these big developers, these big companies, they're not gonna set one or, can these guys make up their mind? What do they wanna do? And I ain't blaming nobody because it's a learned experience, okay? So I'll take the fall with anybody else, but we just gotta do a better job of this. That's all I, I come in, so I want to say we just need to do a better job of it.
Which is a perfect segue into our item, I, new and old business, it has to do with council code of conduct and ethics. And I think this was a good display of everyone being civil and cooperative and great communication. I really appreciate everybody's patience and professional outlook on a very, very challenging issue before us. So, so thank you very much. And that's a perfect segue to our attorney to talk more.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you want, I can bring up the two versions on the screen, but basically what we're asking you to do today is decide whether you wanna adopt the originally drafted Code of Conduct and Ethics or the more streamlined version that was provided to you. They both basically cover the same material, however, one has more detail and did have some duplicative provisions to both the meeting rules and internally among it. But, but that's really your choice for tonight if you want to adopt, but you only get to adopt one version. We can't have two competing versions. Because they are slight, you know, there's some wording that's slightly different.
Yes. And again, for the folks at home and the folks in the audience, this is something that a lot of time and energy has been spent on over the last couple of months, mostly by our town attorney and assistant town attorney. And a lot of feedback from council members as well. And the question before us is do we want the original longer version or the more streamlined with less, less words? And these, both versions have been sent around. There's been discussion individual with you. That being said, without elaborating on the point, is, is there a motion toward either one of these?
Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion? Let somebody else does.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the original version. I know it's longer, but this is a very important issue and details do not need to be overlooked or assumptions made.
Ms. Behringer is making a motion that we adopt the original, longer, more detailed version. Is there a second?
I'd second that.
Second by Mr. Matthews. There's a motion and a second that we adopt the original version of the Code of Conduct and Ethics. That being said, all those for a voice vote, all in favor of adopting that version signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? It passes unanimously. Great. Look how cordial.
It's a miracle.
Good communication. A lot of hard work paid off, Attorney Jones. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. And now we can move right along to committee reports and let's recognize council members starting down with Mr. Matthews and working this way.
We, the Veterans Committee met last Monday and we've got a very big schedule coming up for the tail end of this year, going on into next year. It's very ambitious, a lot of good things and we've got a good team together making all this happen. So we'll keep everybody updated on, on upcoming events. I know Veterans Day is right around the corner. Then we've got the Gold Star families and many other things coming. So everything's moving forward.
Keep up the good work. Mr. Singleton, committee report?
I don't have a committee report. No, I do have a council report, but no committee report.
We'll come back. Committee report? Committee report?
No committee reports.
No committee reports. Saying that, then act, now we get to the manager reports and the talk of the town, Ms. Miller.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight we have before you your September Talk of the Town report. I'll ask Assistant Manager Hodges to briefly go over the highlights.
Yes, in just a moment. And Vernley have closed the window and closing something else of everybody for just a moment. Mayor and council members probably get that open.
As we're waiting for Mr. Hodges, I did just wanna remind council members again that our September work session will be Thursday, the 26th, as we just talked about. And then we will be having a special meeting for the quasi judicial training with our Board of Adjustments colleagues on October 1st. So wanted to make sure that was on everybody's calendar because it's a little, a different schedule than we're, we're used to with our normal meeting schedules.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Miller. The first item on the, the Talk of the Town is a reminder of the meetings, of the joint meeting of the, on the work session with the Garner Economic Development Corporation. Our plan for that night is, as we've done with joint meetings in the past, is have the GEDC board, joint council at the diocese, we'll have, it'll be a little cozy, but that will give us an opportunity to all be together to be able to hear a presentation on the Northeast Gateway proposal, or Northeast Gateway Study from the consultant that is working on that. The Big Sweep Litter Sweep event is gonna be held this Saturday on September 21st. This is a, a project that we have done for many years in conjunction with Wake County's Big Sweep and we add some litter pickup to it. There's a link there for any volunteers that wish to volunteer. If anyone's listening from home or watching this later and they are interested in volunteering, you can go to our Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources page and there's a link there to be able to sign up for volunteering for that event. A reminder to our council that you are eligible to participate in our flu vaccine clinic that will be held on September 25th. There's links in the email, in the report that you can sign up for a slot for that. Our next Affordable Housing Task Force will be on Monday, the September 30th. We will feature our partner presentation will be the Apex staff will be presenting on their housing plan. Reminder of Garner, Garner's Fireman's Festival on October 5th and also a new event Garner Night Out that the Police Department is doing in conjunction with the Downtown Garner Association's Food Truck Rodeo. So all of that will be held on October 12th and it will be sort of a combination on the National Night Out theme, but combining it with the Downtown Garner event. So we're looking forward to a great new collaborative event to add to our very successful trickery food truck rodeo. You also have the statistics from the Garner Info monthly app. You'll see there that a number of our, the items this month are showing is completed. We mentioned last month that we were doing some work with some, making some changes to our system to make sure that those were responded to quickly. I will mention again that you do see low numbers for some of our things like tall grass and weeds, and just wanted to give another shout out to our inspections team, that part of the reason that you see such a low number there is they've taken such a proactive approach to that this year, that many of those cases never went into Garner Info, they were handled ahead of going there. So while you see low numbers there, it's not an indicator of the number of situations that we have helped in the community this year. If you've got any questions, or this season, if you have any questions about anything in the report, I'll be happy to answer those.
Thank you.
That's all we have to report on Talk of the Town. I did just want to briefly mention, and it was mentioned earlier in our meeting this evening, that the Go Raleigh Bus 20 is now providing weekend service, and so we're excited now to have weekend service with our transit service here in town. That started about two weeks ago, but provides another opportunity for residents to be able to use a transit system on the weekend. So that's all the brief updates we have for council this evening. Certainly we're happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. And attorney reports, Ms. Jones?
No report tonight.
You've done enough work.
And no close session.
Thank you. Council reports, let's start with Mr. Vance's end and see if there's any other council reports.
Yes, I'd like to say a great job too, Parks and Rec on last week. This month, we are celebrating a National Hispanic Heritage Month, and on Friday was the day scheduled to have outside festivities in the Garner Rec Park area, the Garner Recreation Center, or because of rain was not able to have it outside, it went inside, the adjustment was made, and just I want to say great job to the Parks and Rec and coordinate that event in spite of the rain, had pretty good attendance.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dallinger.
Yeah, just, I don't know if anybody made it out to Optimus Big Band Bash at the park this past Saturday. We had a News River Big Band out at Shelter One, about 200 people came out and listened to band music for a couple hours. Weather was perfect, food trucks and all that good stuff. It was the first time the club had done anything like that, and hopefully to do it each year. So when people say Garner did have events, we're doing events. The other question I had was, what's the status of the Homestead at Bryan Road project? I had some concerns about some representations that were made at the planning commission, and I don't know if any conversations have been had with them. There were some representations about what the housing prices would be relative to cost of services, and some communications to planning commission while they were making their decision on workforce and affordable housing that didn't seem to job with any council conversations I've been made aware of. Has anyone had any conversations or what's the track for them? Because I know they sent out a specialty permit pre-submitting, which is weird because we haven't voted on that rezoning yet. Does anyone have an update on where their plans are?
Looking at our pending agenda, it looks like they're scheduled to come back to council for consideration at the October 8th regular meeting. So I don't know if planning staff has any other updates on their progress to this point, but right now we've got them penciled in for coming back at the October 8th meeting.
Has anyone reached out to them about their planning commission statements that I have concerns over?
I believe that they're aware of it. Admittedly, it's not been tops on our list, but we'll make sure that they have at least have some kind of response to that, whether it's no response or some consideration.
I mean, I'd like to have a response before it comes back to us, and I can put something in writing they can respond to, but we could just pass our own code of ethics and have a very low tolerance for what occurred. I'll put it that way. So if I need to put something in writing and send to the staff and council for them to respond to before they come back to us, I will do that, but thank you for that update.
Okay, so is that a go? Are you getting it?
I'm getting it.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Council reports.
Yes, the work that's been, was being done on Garner Road, at least the water lines is finished, and I would have to say that the subcontractor did an excellent job. Minimal amount of disruption, there was disruption, but a minimal amount and handled very well. Lots of times on the weekends, they took the cones away so that people could drive on both lanes, a lot of consideration. I heard no complaints at all from residents, and it's finished and we're happy to see it.
It's finished. Will there be any more repaving?
I don't think so. I think they've covered everything where they worked, but they're not going to resurface the whole road, as far as I understand.
So Mayor, if I, what they're doing there, Leah may have some additional information, but in working with the project manager, I know last week while Leah was traveling, they have done full lane width replacement of pavement anywhere that they had a patch. So they will not be typically with utility work, they wouldn't be going from one end of the project to the other end of the project, but they would be going from the full lane width of anywhere that they had to make a patch. So the pavement as you see it now, aside from any minor tweaks, is the final pavement for the project.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, and it actually is better than before they started.
It is.
It definitely is. Thank you very much. Council reports.
Will they be striping it? I'm assuming they will. Because, okay, they will be eventually-
It was scheduled for this past weekend, but I think the rain probably prevented that from happening, so.
All right. Question on will we improve the fee schedule and on the fee and lieu of parking and dedication? Did that change or did it remain the same and it was not affected by changes in the fee schedule?
I did not believe that changed this year. We were going to look at evaluating that. That was somewhat put on hold when the fire impact fee bill was submitted.
There were no additional updates to the fee schedule, other than we went back and it was recommended to increase the fee for the rentals for boats and canoes and things at the boathouse, and council decided that they wanted to keep it at the FY 24, so that was the only change.
Well, I just, I mean, do we need to evaluate the fee and lieu of parking, what our sister communities are doing? Because, you know, the price of lanes is leveled off, do we not need to evaluate that?
Yes, we do, and it's in process now. So because that's a little bit more complicated than just our traditional fees, it's going to take a little bit more research and best practices, so that's on our list to follow up with as well.
Okay, I was just, you know, because you've got all these hundreds of homes and all that, and now they wouldn't be affected by this, but, you know, we need to stay on top of it. We're taking fee and lieu to help build parks, we know how much one of the parks costs, and we thought it was a cost, the parks, both of them. So thank you.
Yes, good question. Mr. Matthews? Okay, and that concludes our discussion and reports. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Ms. Behringer makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Vance, second. All in favor of adopting the motion to adjourn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Hearing none, it's unanimous. We stand adjourned. All right, thanks everyone. Thanks to everyone.